Big rock out there and etching in like something on that it's free except for the etching part. And it's cool for me.
Parks and Rec has had a slow city effort at making their signs look cohesive and consistent. In terms of the parks. So I don't know if one thought is, well, if we make our city hall sign consistent with our park sign, then there's like a branding with our sign in chat.
Yeah, the way finding should be consistent, I agree.
That's so, so. Far barring the, the, the edge of the rock, that was gonna be my plan was to get a quote. Yeah, so something like. The one like part was based on that. It would be, we can sell the, the sign somewhere. I mean, if, if, if there is something that you know that's.
Well, see, those are the kind of things that are good to talk about that they'll say in their shop.
Yeah, I think it's good for sign consistency, but. I think I still argue for this rock endings. But we could have like leading up, I think we still need way finding sites to get here because of where this building is located. So those signs could be. Consistent with whatever parks is doing.
Yeah, and so. In, in it, the, the reason we didn't have included in, in the bid for Maxim was. It was, it was going to be an ad. And anything that we added, you tack on an extra seven percent for their management fee. So we later, we can get done cheaper. Elsewhere.
Well, we're sort of on the top of this. Have we thought about putting an art pad here for the public art displays?
Um, I, I, I know that location of. temporary sculptures. Uh, has been an ongoing topic of conversation and, and this is all you're gonna be pitched to. And it wasn't one of their favorite locations because of. How away from downtown. They, I think, and Josh, I think wrong, they're not wrong, but I think they're looking at like. In front of Free Bird, um, the other circular seating area is all of, uh, don't require. Brower is, is when you're required to install a temporary sculpture pad, uh, at Baker and Grant's. Next to Grand View Commons, but part of his. Uh, DVD agreement for, uh, all of that.
It doesn't mean you couldn't suggest that we like.
Yeah, or I mean, it wouldn't be a bad thing to have maybe some permanent. Because that is not, we're not taking away from the artists who are in this thing and having their work promoted, but we're still like making this.
Zach, I feel like would say something like high school mural.
And we, we, we haven't been getting close to, 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 to paint and, um, uh, paint barn.
You mentioned the sculpture required for grand view. I would personally like to see. More visible public benefits like that incorporated in our PD applications. I feel like oftentimes it's like. We're combining odd parcels, we're widening the street, we're. Things that I don't feel like ours are noticeable to the public. I think asking for something like. An art sculpture, um, is definitely to be visible to the public and perceived to public benefit.
So, um, and, and I've talked with Michelle about this, that, uh, over with the CD process for writing comments. I, 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 I feel they should have been required to place a piece of art, not just a pad where we can.
Didn't Los Antares commit to a piece of art or, or a dollar figure associated with?
Yeah, so, so, so we have five thousand in escrow, uh, from Los Antares when we find something.
For that common corner.
Right, right. Have they been talking about keeping the one that's there right now? I mean, I just know. We've struggled with that location through the years. And I think it looks happy and that it's big, but it's not too big, it's not blocking their thing, it's got a nice color to it. I mean. I think it might be worth discussing keeping that one, but I had it come up at ACH.
But, but, I mean, i- i- if, if, if there is a, a, a sense of like, we, we, we like that one. Then that we can bring up that ACH and say, you know, City Temple has indicated that. You know, that one, that one looks nice there.
I mean, I'm not trying, you know, not, it's just we debate, we keep talking about this and at some point we have to. Something needs to happen, you know, I mean, it's supposed to, so.
Well, well, I mean, you know, um, I, I think we, we've been using it as, as one of rotating locations and. And with the intent of trying to find that right piece there. It, I, you know, I think it's. A matter of time until we, you know, find the, the piece that's, uh, the right size and right cost. Cause we, we, we've had some installed there that are very large, but also very expensive. Yeah. But, um, but we do, uh, I know, um. ACH had, I think, eighteen thousand, um. In, uh, in, in reserve balance from previous paint vector, uh, revenue. That can go toward the piece of art or, um, the bicentennial or something like that.
The other thing for that corner is that, you know, just the way we were talking that. Putting something here because it's not as visible that it, it would be good for a permanent piece that eventually people will see it. The other side of it is that the, that corner is so visible that a rotating piece is like, you know, it's like a driving exhibit.
Well, and, and, and the value of that money is, is diminishing since they're, right? The, the person.
And is it tied to that location?
I mean, I, I, how, how, how does everybody feel about the one that's currently there?
I have to look at it again. Is it orange and reddish and smallerish?
It is, it comes with a cog, like that, like half a cog.
Oh, right.
They like we debated with the size of that location and having it be visible, but also not having it be so large that it's blocking.
What exactly?
It was the one like two times, the, the one. I, it was the, the one with the guy who submits all the time, what's his name? Ray, maybe?
Oh, Ray Cat.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it was the second one of his that we put in, that we were debating.
Yeah, it was like the, the basic case that all kind of.
Yeah, the pistol was the first one and then it was the second one.
That, that, that was a fun installation. Full four hours on the hottest day in the summer, put together.
So welcome, so we're just talking about public care. Since we're all here and. Justin, Ron, I give you just to go through this afternoon, good time to prepare for us that we should all. I guess I should, I do have a number of the public. And we do have honorated participation. On the top of the agenda, you have anything you want to say or to dislist this site as well? Appreciate your meeting.
No, I, I just came from the next reform and, uh, I was just, uh. I forgot about what was gonna be goal setting and I think part of this, what was this being or?
Yep.
And so I was more or less interested in. Hearing what your goals were and listening to what you had to say.
Great, appreciate it, thank you.
The, and, and the, the stuff they included isn't in any particular order, um. But, uh, for general fund revenue. Um, we know that we're gonna be at five percent, um, at, at, at least, uh, for an increase in, um. At more property tax. Um, because for, for some purposes, uh, completely increased five percent of the rate of inflation whichever is left. And inflation has been a lot this year. Um, now that, that would include, um. Things like, uh, new, uh, additions, um, that, that people have, changes that people have made to the property. For, so the DAFP, uh, has approved their, um. Bending plan, uh, for the upcoming calendar year. And the, the cost, uh, is gonna be a, a significant change. It's, it's a larger increase. Um, and I believe that there's another large increase predicted for, for next year, um, to accommodate getting up to six full time. Uh, firefighters on, on, on staff of two staff at each, um, location. So that five percent, uh, revenue benefit that we're gonna see this year, um, quickly gets. Uh, consumed by the, the debt and the, um, sheriff counter, which is, is less of an increase, but still. Those mid can that, uh, that helps us just, just approve. Um, I don't know if we had any, any questions on.
So you're not predicting any leftovers?
Um, so we, 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 we don't have hard numbers yet or revenue. But that, that fire cost increases. It, it doesn't help.
So don't plan on.
I, 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 I went with.
So we think that's gonna cover it? Maybe we don't know.
I, we, we, I, 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 I don't think we, we know for certain yet, um, I mean. But my, my goal is never to budget a deficit.
Right.
And so it would, it's my goal and your original do. To find those projects that aren't as detrimental to cut. To be able to, to cover that, that difference.
And I should really have much better numbers on my march.
Sure, on the DAFP budget. Did. Was there a discussion at council about that budget and about what the proposal was since it was a signature increase? Just generally that we were aiming to add. And the goal is to get from four firefighters to six. So the. The bulk of the, the bulk of the increases and projected.
Right, no, I understand.
Extra people did, but I guess. Does anybody else think that that, that that's something that we may not need? I mean, I don't know that the DAFP needs six full line. Firefighter. I don't know if it makes a difference if we say as a council, we say, we're not in favor of that and we want, you know, we. Don't wanna prove that and at the very least we should both know on the budget when it comes up for the DAFP. As, I mean, it may not make any difference because Webster Dexter are gonna vote for it. They're, they're very in favor of getting two people at their stations, just like we have two.
There wasn't in-depth discussion of. Rolling it up, so doing two this year, two next year, two the year after that. Um, they have charts where they know where all the calls are. So you don't necessarily need to staff it twenty-four hours to, to cover most of the calls. Uh, it was never discussed. Beyond just a brief.
It, it's been, it's been a DAFP goal to get to where the firefighters are that. Operating independently. But for, for example, um, you know, if somebody falls. If a firefighter falls. And he's the, he or she is the bone. Firefighter at one station. But I consider. Attention, safe. They injure themselves, won't have their radio or. Plus they want, you know, the girls down working in pairs. And the, the, the long-term thought is that. When, um. When there's a call and, you know, northern legislature township, that station will respond and our, our station doesn't have it. You know, I understand that's the benefit of having more people, if it's obvious in the face, right? So. Well, well, the, the, the other side of that equation, um. Is the cost allocation formula. You know, it's a hundred percent based on runs for the ones that, um, we talked towards our communities that, that aren't shared on it. And, um, at the last meeting. Uh, supervisor Drackovich from Dexter Township asked if. The formula could be looked at. Um, which I. I'm willing to do, certainly one could do or if we should do, um. I thought the formula was integrated for. Long, I guess I understood. But it would, it would take the vote of all three communities to change the formula, so. I think we're gonna see some type of discussion on that. Between the three townships, whether all three of them are willing to change it or not, remains to be seen, but I think there is a potential. Change in that formula. No matter what category you add will probably benefit the city. You know, if you, if you add a population or if you add the valuable. Will benefit us.
Yeah. Well, historically, when we offered up those formulas changes, which we did, when we did a huge discussion about combining the style. They were gonna favor the city and the township said no at that. So, I mean. I don't. I don't see them saying, yeah, sure, let's do a new formula that's. They were, we were paying thirty-five, forty percent, we're paying on the rooms. There was never any discussion. So, I mean, um, I agree all for it, unless it's important and stuff, but unless it benefits them, I don't see any reason why they're gonna say, yeah, they. Like you said, all the formulas as they change are gonna benefit us. You know, taxable value for the areas, population, I mean, every single market that was out there.
Well, the reality is that. Any, anything that would change would take some good abuse to, that's probably a. Three-year aggregate or five-year aggregate or something, but it's really the fact that it would be placed as well for the complete. Stock from one system to the other. Those things we all talked about years ago as well, but.
Thanks, Phil. Um, the thing that I had here was the section planning. Um, I provided, so last year around time, um, we talked about, uh. Session planning and I provided some, some charts. Um, I provided some updated charts. And I think, uh. And one of the, one of the most telling ones is on page, uh, twenty twenty-eight. Uh, folks that are, are new to their position over the last few years. Um. You know, I, I feel that is, you know, one of my responsibilities and, and one of my, uh. Duties and goals to, um. Train those folks that are coming in who maybe new to the, to this whole profession and. Um, those who are, who are new to their positions, um, but making sure that there is. A transition and that, uh, those, those folks are, are coming in blind. Um, but that, uh, you know, we have experienced folks to prepare with them. Um, and I, I feel we've done a really good job of that, um, over the last couple of years. And, uh, you know, I think that, that, um, you know, between myself and Rory, Michelle, you know, we, we have a really strong management team. Um, and, you know, with, and, uh, take, take the time to, to. Train and spend, spend time in, in, in working through, uh, the roles, the position where you can decide to. Uh, specifically train me and, uh. That we, we have more changes coming. And, uh, I think planning for that is, is important. Um, in your view, you'll, you'll know that, um, uh, Murray is, we're gonna be looking at, preparing here in the next, next couple of years. And, um, that's, that's gonna be, gonna be an important one. And, um, my goal with that is. Not this coming fiscal year, but following fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, uh, Murray's looking at, at preparing at the end of that fiscal year. Uh, at the beginning of that fiscal year, I would like to, um, start looking for, uh. Someone to, to serve as a, you know, finance director and training, um, someone who has the, the education and the skills. Um, but bring them in early and let them spend a year with Murray, um, to get to know our processes and, and, and plans. Uh, I don't know, but we have somebody on staff right now who, uh, could settle for that role.
Well, so do possibly, possibly one question.
So is it, is it, um. Is it important to bring that person in before the fiscal year? As opposed to starting at the clear? I mean, you wanna see, go out and see the full cycle, right?
Right.
So. They would be seeing the closeout of one year. If it was July to July. Or they were July to July one, or they open that three, they'd be seeing the closeout. The prior year first, right? Maybe it doesn't matter.
As opposed, as opposed to seeing a year start. They'd, they'd see the closeout of a year, they'd see the budgeting process. And, well, so, I, I understand the idea of an overlap. A, a year seems like a lot to me. Um. My assumption is that we would look for somebody that was similarly qualified. And have some experience and understand processes in general and that with. Some overlap, which would be beneficial because obviously you have a lot of. Institutional knowledge of the city. Seems like if somebody is, don't qualify and inexperienced, but I don't know, I don't know what the job market is like either. I don't know if that's like, uh. Extremely difficult thing to hire for. So maybe starting earlier just because you gotta find somebody. I mean, you may have intentions of starting a year early, you may not find somebody until you get four or five months away.
One of the keys just, I mean, so if you're like a county professional, um. That part of my job is gonna be easy because of. It's the same, you know, no matter what, um. It's the things that are Dexter, Dexter specific, you know, how we budget, um, you know, sharing some of this program and taxes. Those taxes are different from one community to another because it's kind of based on what your county treasurer wants to do. You know, as far as how you settle, stuff like that. So like absolutely the, the January, February, March. Refrain is key, um, I think, definitely key.
Yeah, uh, I appreciate some overlap. I do think a year is really long, um, we're, we're basically double paying for position. Uh, my other concern would be because of the job market, if we're training someone who doesn't have a background. We've just invested a year training someone who can go be an assessor somewhere else and make more money.
Oh, the assessing question of it right now, if. None allows it, I was probably gonna stay on that.
Okay. But we, we've still spent a year training somebody to do high-end stuff and now.
And, and even if I didn't stay in this, that thing, you would probably. Uh, you're not gonna find anybody that's gonna do everything I do. Not gonna happen.
Uh, you said if Mertz allows it. What if, is that more information or?
Uh, the retirement system, there are some rules about settling back into the position that you were in, but my argument would be that my position was.
Can't you do that after the termination of sixty days?
Which also, I was thinking about that just in that, and I didn't think about that when we originally. Uh, recently, uh, this, um, if I have to wait sixty days after being thirty, if that's too late unless there's a, like a field worker. So, you know, in, um. It'll probably have to be like the March retirement and come back in June. Be able to do what I'm just, so, because I'm always be talking about that, you know.
Zach, I'm just jumping. Yeah, uh, question on the other side of, um. Staffing planning, so when I worked in Dexter Township for the position that I used directly overseeing, had high turnover. Cause it was sixteen to twenty-four hours a week. You're out of college, you're trained, you go to another one. Uh, so I got really good and, and I was annoyed that it's high turnover because you have to keep training someone, but I figured how to get really good with good training. Uh, and as part of that, in, in other various histories. There, there's what I call the bus test, you know, having a long training and overlap is good, but what if. Someone gets hit by a bus and we have to replace them immediately or the. Something else, else happens. Are we robust enough that we're gonna, we will wobble and that we know what the tasks are and that we can do that? Okay, not just, not just for you, but for, for all these positions.
And that's why we put that in the goals as a new goal is, cause one thing that we do not have a whole lot of. But just because the way we organically grow is procedure manuals. You know, how do you, how do you be a treasurer? You know, well, guess what? It's all right here. Um, and so we had, we put that, Justin and I talked and he put it in the goals of kind of. Having all of our positions start completing, you know, manuals, what we do, this is how we do it. So that if somebody gets hit by a bus.
And, and is, are there opportunities for cross-training?
That's already been done to a extent, you know, while you.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I, I think, um, it just, just based on the, the nature of the office and. Uh, or it's part of it, there, there has been a lot of cross-training already, um. There, uh, obviously there, there are things that are specific to each position. But, um, there, there's a lot that, you know, for example, Josh and I, um. Overlap on a lot of things, uh, Michelle and I, Cory and I, where you got, there's, there's a lot of things that, um. We've very intentionally, uh, worked to, to make sure that we're not the only one capable of doing it. Uh, for example, payroll, um, where you can do it, I can do it, Josh can do it. So there, there's, there's, and there's all, a lot of that.
Yeah, water and wastewater streets have been doing it for a number of years, but it's also a little bit easier when you have a lot more employees to do that. I know that Tim's, um, carrying on the same tradition that we've had for a long time down there. You have your department set, you have her, you have, uh. Andrea for the wastewater, you have Eric. And not that they, they don't put the, the big picture together, but if something happened to Tim, you know, they would be able to drive. That department, you know, and also Justin and Cory, but it's a lot easier when they got more employees.
Also, just for ours, just for wastewater, I mean, I've been having to put, uh, the sheets together, so whatever, like for instance, lab. Here's a test or whatever, here's a run down, how you do it. So anybody can go in there and say, they're not perfect that they come over here and do it. And we've been working on that for the last couple of months and getting those up and even down the filter building here, so that way. People do know everybody that's, like Dan said, we're doing this. I mean, water and wastewater, it's, we need it all, all of us, and that, you know, even though it's, it was separated between two of us and water and. Or the wastewater, everybody can do everything. Um, going to DPW might be a little different myself, I would have a problem with it because I go to DPW every year, um, but I think that everybody would.
Um, going to DPW might be a little different myself, I wouldn't have a problem with it because I go to DPW every year, um, but I think that everybody would have worries.
Can you give you like an example? I wrote down for the first time, uh, how I do the tax bills. For the summer and then for the winter bill, I actually had Jenna do it. I had her use my checklist to see, okay, can somebody use this checklist and actually get a tax bill? And she was able to, um, so things like that, um.
For the other people on the, on the org chart that you went through, the purpose page, this is twenty, but on page twenty-one. Um, and those who simply, um. So have you had that conversation with other people that are eligible to say, you know, you know, you just, you have any tentative plans so that we can, you know, help you to start planning for those replacements?
Yeah, so, so I, um, Tim and I have had that conversation for, um, and we know that, that's not more than a few years away. Um, we, I, I haven't specifically had, had that conversation with Michelle, but I, I know that she's probably five to seven years out. Um, probably same with Brenda, even though Brenda's eligible now, it'll probably be a while before, before shooting factors. Um, so, so really the, the two biggest and most impactful in that in short would be Melissa.
Yeah, has anybody talked to Anna?
As far as she plans her, she said, oh, three years, so.
But we have, we have somebody.
Oh, we have, sure, yeah, that's, when we took her on, we'll get you here. Um, I've had a bit more roles now where I told her I wanted to start getting to, uh, every aspect of it. I want her, I want, I want her to know all these reports on, you know, where the brat, you know, in the computers, Andrea's got a computer that just. She's got something, because we're supposed to hold on to her so long, we can get the else. So she's learning all of that now and moved into that. So I was planning that, uh, for, her in about four years and then. About thing a couple of years too, because Bob is actually eligible a year, a little over a year. Um, there's a, if you're actually looking or not, the DPW actually showed interest in that, so that's a possibility. But like I said, we still gotta keep DPW as far, plus trying to find somebody for her. So him and I have been talking about how we're gonna probably do it, so.
So what did you learn from that?
Uh, well, you know, I think, I think moving forward with, um, right, I thought of, uh, trying to get things in order and written down and, uh, so that we didn't. Do you, uh, pass the knowledge off in terms of format, uh, is, is getting ready to hold.
The, um. I know what some folks in the past, we had more, um. Companies like Carl, doing stuff for, so waiting to do, of course. Is, are still in for whatever we call the community development manager that's only time, um. Are there other, I mean. Maybe as a staff gap or as an interim or a bridge, you know, I think, what was the, what's the guy from that other company? Chairman all the time in terms of the beginning that doesn't waste water and treat and stuff?
Blair.
Blair. Blair. Blair, exactly. Like, I know he, he actually helped us out for a while, I think, on some of them as well. It seems, it seems like the contracted services could help us bridge, but yeah, to, if like per se. You know, we could invite a replacement for Marie for a time and we needed to hire a, you know, we need to help us, so.
Both Matt Ryan and Rayna Ross who provide that service.
Yeah.
Um, it's looked at much, much suspicious when we find the, the finance director role.
True.
Because I'm here. But they didn't buy that service.
Well, and, and don't get me wrong, I think. I, I think having a finance person that's a direct employee, having a community development manager that's directed everything, having a, uh, uh, director of DPW and those that have wasted water treatment, water and shore, that all those things, I think those are key personnel that need to be, but.
Yeah, as, as stock and, and related to cash, both, both of those, both of those are on the income from students.
Right, and I, and I think if you work toward getting processes and procedures in place, that they, some of the stuff. It's gonna be hard to transfer that, that I've been here and this is how we do things and, oh, yeah, that person asks about this every year when it comes back. Those are gonna be real tough to do, that's just in the card. But I think come together with the plan instead. You know, plan X months ahead, plan for this overlap, you know, in an emergency. Here's a list of different firms that you can contact or that you would expect to use or different key areas. I, I think, I think you're closer than something might initially think, um, where your plans are, but it's, I don't think I go into things in person. It's your, I think the biggest thing is who's gonna do what when, right? And even if they say, oh, four years from now. Those numbers move all the time, right? And somebody gets fed up one day and says, that's it, I'm helping, I'm out. I feel excited when he says, I can't die yet, it's just the numbers don't work out. They stay a while, they're having all the time. But you definitely gotta have conversations, yeah.
And, and, and that's why a lot, a lot of the numbers that I gave with, with, you know, the technical repair that I mentioned were, are, are still loose. Um, be, because of that flexibility, you know? Um, like, we, we have people who are eligible for error right now, who are, who have indicated that they might, they are on a call. Uh, you know, that they won't want anything to say, all right, I'm, I'm done, or they didn't, and ideally give us, you know, some notice, which, you know, I think we've worked really hard to, you know. Have a really good relationship with all the employees to the point where they. I, I, I think they, they have enough respect for Tim, her, myself, that, um, they, they would, they would give us that notice if, yeah. So like, all right, I'm, I'm ready to retire, and here's, here's, pretty much notice.
So if this was next year. If we'd like that a year goes by and Justin puts this chart in front of us that says, we're retiring at the year of twenty twenty-five. When would you be encouraging him to start the hiring process?
Who's sleeping in twenty-five? First of all, oh, right, oh.
Although, I mean, the, the initial plan is right now that I just.
You mean, you mean if the date got extended?
No, if I, if I step into just assessing.
Yeah, for sure.
And quite frankly.
I get that value, but that value is highest, I'm like.
And even if I didn't step into assessing and just stepped away completely, it's not like I would blow you guys off. And you might not like my Howard rating.
How long does, does a typical hiring process like that take, Justin?
I would say probably at least three months. For, for a high level division.
I mean, I, and now, this is, this is now, not two years from now, but they had across the board, they had finance. Director position is open for months, five, six months without being able to fill it. It's, it's really a, I, I don't know what it is. I don't know if, if you're young. People coming out of college just aren't thinking about government service or, you know, I, I don't know why that is, but it's why I know one of the shawies, but. Um, but with other ones, I don't know why they've been open like that. What they have then. Probably maybe end of summer or fall of twenty-four. I would say definitely, definitely for the whole time season. I think that's it. So that, that's basically, um, July to March.
That you want somebody here. Yeah. Which means it's probably a little year away. Or a little over a year away.
I mean, I don't know if it necessarily has to be July because you're doing the same. Process in November. So maybe you probably could do like get away from not doing the summer and just bring them in for the, the end of November and March.
Yeah. Michelle's position, if she was to leave, how would we, how would we fill that void or something?
Um, so right now, um, we would probably bring Carla Warman in for, um, some medical services. Uh, in the short term, while we, uh, recruited, uh, we do have an associate planner, um, but she's also only, only been with us for a year and, um, uh, before us, her experience was, uh, interning with, um, another community for about a year. Um, and, and I have had some, some. Very tough conversations with her about whether she's ready to, to settle into the community development manager role or whether, um, we're looking outside.
I don't think Michelle's going anywhere.
Well, the problem, the problem I have is a number of years ago, the reason I changed our plan at the water wastewater streets was because of all the terrible story about losing a director. And the rest of the people not knowing what direction to go in. And all it does is it harms the city, residents and business owners. And I feel the same way about Michelle and obviously your position too, um. And what are we gonna do to resolve that? It's a great conversation and I would love to be updated on it if we could, or however, you know, you feel every three months or however often, um, because we don't wanna leave. We don't wanna have that if we don't have to, and that, that costs money, don't we?
Yeah, and, and, and I think for, for Michelle, the word, word, word. Twenty-two years out, Rob. What, what, what she's thinking about right there, you know?
I have a question about the partnering of the two responsibilities in that position right now. So there's sort of the planning and then there's all the community involvement and economic involved. Is there a direct thought about separating those? Do we have enough work in either of those two areas that we would have two different people in those positions?
I, I, I mean, there's, there's always that possibility. Uh, I mean, if, if council would like to take a more active vote enforcement. Um, stance and, and, and pay for that service. There, there are a bunch of people out there who are wanting to do that and that's probably the route that we would go. Um, because it, it is tough to find someone who's, you know, for him, for, for time to do just vote enforcement. Um, it's, it's. Not, 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 not a fun role and, uh, he, he usually they're like, oh, okay, yeah, I'll, I'll give it a shot and then. No, I'm, I'm, I'm good with this, this is a whole lot of fun, so.
Well, and so like in her, in the planning role, that's, you, a lot of the administrative reviews of the plan, you know, that come through. There's a lot we, we rely on Carla Warman for. I was actually personally surprised when I first started in the city thing. When site plan reviews would come through that Carla Warman, we contracted out for such an extensive, uh, extensive review of things that came forward to planning permission. My understanding is that municipalities, their internal person is responsible for that. Um, they don't contract out for those planning services. So it must be the case that, that's either too extensive of an app. I'm just wondering, is, is there any point where we were bringing those, those sector review entirely internal?
Um, so the, the witness instructor now, if you think of plan review as like a ball game. But Michelle will work that. Michelle, Michelle personally would call in the play is and deciding whether to kind of, kind of all off to Carla Warman or, um, you know, gathering the, those reviews from, from the engineer, from, from, and from utilities, from the AFD. She, she's the person who manages all that and keeps those processes flowing. Um, so I, I, I believe that there are times where, especially with, um, um. Same ones that are permitted uses, where she does that herself. But I'm working on every kind of thing for like, like the PUDs, the, you know, one of her developments where, where she, she does do that support stuff.
And then in terms of the economic development side of things or community development side of things, I'm just curious, what are the main tasks related to that?
So, um, with, with economic development, it is working with SPAR, it's working with, um, those who. Uh, make phone calls to the city, inquiry about different pieces of property, um, can, can I do this in, in this location? Um, you know, field goal calling emails, which there are a significant number, um, and. Trying to reach out to make those connections between property owners. Um, for example, we, we just had a redevelopment. Uh, or pre-application meeting, um, for eighty-one eighty Main Street. Um, and Michelle was the person who made that connection. Oh, this person's interested in doing a development, that, that might be an appropriate use for. Eighty-one eighty Main Street, let me make that connection between that developer and that property owner to see if they can work something out.
So what do you think about in her daily activities, there's between like the planning side of things and the community development side of things? Is it easy to figure that out or not?
I, 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 I have to, to talk to her.
So why is that?
I was just gonna say that as, you know, someone who sits on the planning mission, I kind of appreciate, I, I do appreciate. Other more complex projects, having the different voices, it's like, it's kind of like checks and balances and they definitely provide. Different information, different insights. And so I think, I guess I didn't realize, you know, that Michelle was sort of directing all of that, but if, with. That knowledge, I think she's doing a good job doing that.
Well, and, and, and that would definitely, you know, or when, when you receive a review from Carla Warman. There may be some issues with, with, with that, with that letter and she will reach out and say, why, why, why did you? Make this statement? Why, why are you asking for this information? Um, to, to try and make sure that it's as clean for the applicant as, as possible, that is, is clear to the applicant.
Um, so there's many ways you can shape community development planning office functions as there are communities, um. My background, I was in local governments where we did everything, top to bottom, and I've been a consultant for other communities. Um, as far as the community development director of planning zoning. The, the more hats one wears, there can be conflicts in there. So like a traditional community development director, they're the raw, raw person. Businesses were trying to get it happening, they're going out recruiting, doing VDA stuff, helping people start businesses. Whereas the planning zoning person is the enforcer of the zoning code and the master plan. And sometimes there's conflict. We have persons wearing the same role. So often places will have them a little bit different so that there's that internal. Friction in balancing, um, as far as consulting, um. Or, or how the reports are generated. So it's, it's a matter of casting. Generally, if you have folks that are knowledgeable with the zoning code and planning in general, they can do reports and reviews. I personally like knowing one zoning ordinance myself, because you know all the little wrinkles and all the things that consultants don't know, because they're working in five or ten different communities. Um, there's a price difference, um, if you're paying in house staff, it's forty to fifty dollars an hour. You're paying for them to be in the chair to do it. If it's a consultant, you're paying eighty, two hundred, twenty dollars an hour for them to do the work. Um. But now that's not a cost to the city, that's a cost to the applicant, because those are generally passed through or should be passed through. But what you're, you're essentially doing is you're buying capacity of. You do, you may get ten projects in a short period that you just don't have the staff capacity to do, so you, you're paying for that premium.
Yeah, so, so for example, if Grace learned how to do that. And had capacity. Instead of, as I'm trying to find capacity to pay the consultant, you'd be covering your own cost with. The developer, they don't have.
And, and so what I've heard is there may be interest in deliberately examining how we function as part of this retirement transition stuff, see if there are other ways we might. Do a better. Or the options.
Well, Jamie, I, I, I agree with your question. I like your question because when, when I. Started to analyze, so those are, that was our, our community development manager, and I always asked, how many of them do you do? And I quickly learned that if you came to function at Time or, or Comfort, she felt that she needed help with something. So she could ask for it and have resources important, of course you could ask. I would hope that we could give Grace ever a chance to learn. How to do some of these things and then maybe use Carla to check it maybe, or if that's doable, but. You know, built up, like, you know, to give them a little complex on the version. It seems like since we have an associate planner, we want to. Just learn how to do some of that stuff and ask them, yeah. Just learn how to do some of that stuff and ask them, yeah.
I was gonna say, Allison's a good example. When she first started, she didn't have a lot of experience when I remember them. And she was relatively new, spread, you know, kind of grew into it over a period of time with the system.
But I mean, but that's also an example of, you know, if you're worried about the succession, but if Grace learns over seven years and Michelle really is seven years out. Grace should be able to take a significant step in her learning and training over seven years if we allow her the opportunity to handle different things. Under some guidance and, you know, oversight, whether that's Michelle and or parallel and there should be a learning curve opportunity there in seven years, I suppose, at that.
And 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 that was always the intent was was to provide that or to create opportunity to drive cranes, boats, to set this into those additional plans. When that time comes.
Yeah, because that then 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 would you get to your quite more Michelle name or position appears on the start that somebody sees. You're not looking at the higher shells replacement, you're looking at higher crisis entry position. Which is probably easier to fire. Yeah, one of the hardest things, and I know it's the same up in the office as it is for the rest of the works there, is managing the time. Um having the time. You know, to do. The next thing, to learn the next thing. Um, it's like to be very difficult. With thoughts on succession plan, Justin or?
Um, the next topic is uh road projects. So um we have road road project planned out uh through the summer of twenty twenty four. With um Annaway and Lexington plans for the this coming summer twenty twenty three and Baker plans for twenty twenty four. Now, our schedule tends to revolve around the ten. And when we receive a federal grant dollars for different uh projects. And those those dollars can go specifically for its major roads, you know, the the Bakers, the Ann Arbers, the Centrals. Um, but uh the earlier in twenty twenty two, we worked with um. Uh uh O H M to develop a. List of of potential streets that could serve as the the next set of of targets for road projects and. Um, what different types of treatments could be applicable to those roads? And so I wasn't sure how a couple wanted staffed to tackle planning for those roads that are coming for. Would you like us to come back with a set of recommendations or uh is that something that council would like to have a bigger discussion on at that table?
My preference would be for you to give an overall recommendation and then if it needs to be. Like that more closely, you build on. I one one thing I wanted to note. Is I believe we have, not this year, but next year, we have our road construction budget that will be coming up in our books. So here in break, it's ten years. Comes off in May of twenty twenty four is our last payment, so hopefully we have. Yeah, we we have. Going, you know, we 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 issued about what nine hundred thousand were. Somewhat of their bonds. To be used directly for. E maintenance type projects that could go on the label. Many roads.
Now, maybe twenty four is the last month.
So they touched into.
Ninety one thousand with interest last year.
Okay. So that all I'm saying is that it's gonna free up ninety thousand dollars a year that's currently going towards past road projects. Starting in. Well, you know, this is your twenty one fourth, I'm gonna buy it. Yeah. Before I retired uh as a superintendent for the city of Dexter, uh O H M did a presentation with myself, her, Tim and Justin. On an overlook of our roads. And um. I didn't really care for, you know, where they went with it, but the the bottom line was we weren't spending enough money. If you look at the big picture, is that a correct statement of kind of what they were? Which I didn't agree with totally because we've done a lot of great things. Go ahead, Zach.
Yeah, so so it was. Um, you know, we have a lot of roads that are on that bubble. Um of of becoming. Channel roads, you know, these are these are roads that you may have done projects on, you know, fifteen, twenty years ago that are now reaching the the end of their, you know, useful life. Um, and without some large projects. Um, to to extend that life further, um we're getting into a situation where our P S rating is is starting to to take down. Um, and uh, you know, they were they were pouring out, you know, concepts like, you know, taking taking on an additional bond and um. You know, go to many double and they can be giving you different different financing methods. And um they don't want to gauge couples openness to. To to some of that stuff.
So I guess the reason I brought that up is um the bonds are gonna go off, but I think that. We need to keep doing what we've been doing. I think we've been doing a great job on the roads. Um, and I think we need to revisit as a council. You know, we do have some kind of presentation so we can really get a very horizon. On where we're at, where we've been, where we're at now, how we're gonna maintain what we've been doing over the years. What what was the cost of the? Largely resurfacing effort, but somewhat partial reconstruction. That we spent in Dexter Crossing last two years ago.
I wanna say that was six hundred and fifty thousand. Or sort of those sets of streets.
Well, where I was going is I'm I'm staring at the map. You know, I think I think that um. Some of those that are getting to the. Freezing board should be should be probably candidates for that.
You think it's across almost five hundred and thirty five thousand?
Okay, that's even better.
But uh, is 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 that just in one fiscal year?
Twenty one in each year.
So that 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 I mean, how we do it.
Whatever it is, whatever it is, that gives me a magnitude of rate. It isn't two million, it's something in the range. But where I'm going is that I think it makes sense. I mean, maybe it makes sense then to have. A road presentation for O H M and and have us all hear that. That's what I mean.
That's what I was referring to, sorry.
Yeah, no, I think that's a good suggestion. I didn't hear it that clearly, but I think that's a great suggestion. That's where we're going. But, you know, I'm I'm totally supportive of. Um. Doing those types of projects. I think I think that, you know, the the curb and gutter that's there. By and large, has probably got some useful light, like the it's the driving surface that needs the attention. Some of it probably could get by with. You know, a couple inch resurfacing and then there's others like we did last year where we knew we had. Four base, you know, where we excavated down between the curbs and built it back up, but it appears as a ten. You know, the chart because we reconstructed for that.
One of the things we were looking at too coming this year because O H M was suggesting about um here on farms, you know, and I got Brian Campbell for a lot of stuff. And Kurt and I actually sat down and talked to Dan also uh Justin about how we felt that morning. You know, needed a little bit worse and what those were. And my way of saying was, you might have four to five, three to four in a subdivision. Um, it needs to be done. There's no doubt about it, but a Dan Hoy, you know, three and four, four or five is gonna go into a deteriorate heck a lot quicker than what the subdivision would be. And it's not that we don't want to go, I wouldn't want to go to subdivisions. I think it's safer to keep everything on. Um, but that's, you know, we get this damn white project done. You have all damn ones been done within the last five years. You have Dexter, uh Ann Arbor, most of it's been done. Uh Baker's gonna be done the next year. You got almost a whole group around the city this. That's that's to be done. And I think then we start going with subdivisions and start proving on all of that, you know, we wanted to look at this. For I think it's called Corwin, where basically you have just, you know, middle, they're gonna come over and I've seen that done before and it seems worked pretty well. So and we did it in the Dexter apartment.
I I think I think another resource um. That should be worked into that formula is that the D D A is getting healthier. With respect to the properties that they collect the incremental debt revenue off of. And so the streets that would fall within the D D A. I think that if we've agreed, we could uniformly ask the D D A to help us. In the planning for some of those improvements and some of those tax dollars could come back to the community that way because. That's definitely eligible costs. For that in those windows. So things like Grand that are two and. Um. You know, Broad Street down there near, we're talking about potential development and, you know, Dexter and our road is in the D D A. That long stretch be. Where the the care care building has been going up. And just something to think about also. And I wasn't suggesting that we stop the things that are on the list prior to those. I just think that some of those residential streets have. Those useful lights in the curb and gutter and out and your project is going much more expensive when you start talking about. The green belt and sidewalks and all that stuff. You can keep it within the roadway and improve the driving surface. There's your your dollars go along the way.
Well, and 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 on that deal, we're we're looking at um doing a curb and gutter project in Grand Farms right now. Because it has basically deteriorated and collapsed. Um, but. Once that's done, we could go back in and and not have to touch that and just touch the uh the driving surface.
Yeah, another good thing is that we've done a tremendous job of working on our roads over the last ten or fifteen years and associated with the roads are sidewalk and stormwater. So when we go into this next phase, all of the side, most of the sidewalks and most of the stormwater is done. So that gives us more bang for a buck to actually put into these roads. And then like Sean indicated too, when you got curb and gutter. Except for here in farms in that one spot, when you're going to put the asphalt and not to worry about sidewalks, not to worry about storm. I mean, it protects the world a lot better um when you can utilize curb and gutter. Didn't you go through New York Farms? I mean, they don't mill over like the next entire thing.
About ten years ago.
Yeah, that's about ten years. Had a lot of collection cracks in the back.
No, 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 capes still, right, capes still, you're, I mean, we didn't know all the way to capes still.
We did some. I mean, I saw we did most of this. So how much are we budgeting? Even the the what we have in there shows the the projects we budgeted for. Were we budgeting maintenance for the existing other roads? Because we should be budgeting, you know, something on the order of half of our budget for maintenance and not for roads.
So so we're we're doing, I wanna say forty to sixty thousand each year for um for Maximal. Um, and the chip seal and bog seal and those sorts of maintenance. Um, we 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 don't have any for anymore.
So we're budgeting forty to sixty thousand a year for maintenance essentially.
Well, for, yeah, for for that, for that.
Specific treatment.
Specific treatment. Uh, we're 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 also um doing an annual uh line line restructuring. But you know, that doesn't have to do with that. Uh, all it went through the road.
So we got to. Yeah, we we got to a point where we went through and we figured out what streets we could get to the highest level possible. You were right.
Yep.
And then we went through that process and we're like, we got some big streets that can cost a lot of money, you know, like we did Grand Street, you know what I mean?
Yep.
So now for me, it's almost kind of, I'm get, I like where you're going. We need to start going back. And coming up with a new plan because we're kind of falling back into where we were a little bit, I think, with some of our old rates.
Because the way the plan's supposed to go is maintain the good roads. The ones that are bad, you let them go to crap.
Right.
And then fix them as you can and you keep on maintaining the good roads.
Right.
But if you stop maintaining the good roads. You end up with a map that's mostly grass, but then if we if we don't focus more funds on maintenance. This is gonna be an ongoing cycle that we go through every ten, fifteen years. We're gonna have to keep on bonding and stuff like that. That, I mean, we have a lot of road projects going on. I mean, uh obviously, there's stuff that we need to do, but.
Yeah, Zach?
Yeah, with respect to the the questions, I I feel that the priority list is probably best at an administrative level for review here. I like the. Paying attention to the volume of the roads because there's gonna be much more impact if Dan Hoy is awful. Uh, I would prefer to spend money on roads, not on interest. So if there's a way for us to not do bonding, I I would prefer that. I do have some issues with O H M. Uh, I'm really not happy with the overages on Second Street. That wasn't necessarily roads, but. Um, they have committed or at least comment that they do have folks that that are familiar with N A T O road standards instead of A S T O. Um, so A S T O is suburban highways. Big, big wide roads with the big wide sweeps as opposed to what we have in the village. Our master plan says we want to be walkable and when you have giant curb radius, it doesn't work. You got massive width with roads, it doesn't work. Um, and so I'll point out to folks, I'm gonna bring this up again, like on Dan Hoy. When you're in the bend, that's a super elevated road. The south side is inches above the left so that when you're going really fast. The car pushes down in the road and you go faster with the friction. That is not an urban treatment at all. So. That's my heads up. O H M, I want them to actually come here with urban style roads design.
You talking about my license number? Yeah, we talked about that. Actually, we talked about last week with O H M about that.
Not necessarily about changing the design of the road.
No, we talked about maybe it's more.
It's supposed to be less diverted, yeah. That's my hot, super elevated is the fancy term for when it's baked.
Yeah, on the last, on the last move forward, county with late staff and cities engineer for driver recommendation for road improvement project after four, I guess. I I would hope that city council would ask for a maintenance plan because. And. To the point about not spending money on interest, the way you don't spend money on interest is not getting a bunch of bad roads that get you into a crisis situation where we have to pull out and bond because there's no other. I'm a hundred percent serious when I say you should spend as much maintenance as we do. If we do that in the long term, we're gonna have plenty of new roads. And everybody will have better choice and it's just. I I was I was surprised when I saw the the map, the P S ratings, I was surprised. I I didn't expect to see that. I I just didn't. So and I and I don't know if I necessarily agree with some of the ratings. We need to agree. I don't know that I've driven on any roads in the city where I say, wow, this is really bad. And the life is, you know. To a point where, oh, yeah, so I didn't know what. But I I I do agree and actually I have a couple of email exchanges on both. And one of the things that he commented on was that some of the roads in here on farms, obviously, he was kind of, were were pretty bad. Um, and he referenced back to that these are roads that have been replaced, you know, ten years ago or whatever. And said, and he essentially said, they're in worse shape now than they were ten years ago. And before they got there. So. I I mean, from a list of road projects that that include maintenance and prior phases maintenance to some extent, that that's what I personally. Would like to see more of just the areas. Uh, I think that's important. I I don't think we'll ever get out of this long term cycle of having a lot of. Intensive capital projects periodically unless we get into something where maintenance becomes. Uh, intense capital.
Okay, concrete roads. Concrete the roads. Okay, one other kind of aside is I would also like to see some sort of strategic plan for sidewalk improvements. We basically have a blanket policy that we want to fill all the sidewalk gaps. Which is great policy, but if we don't have a plan, you know, in the next five years, we're going to do this corridor, the next ten years, we're going to do this corridor. It's never going to happen unless the parents of the school show them coming and rage and then we. Quick do a side up there, so I'd like to see us also think about planning for pedestrian transportation and pathways.
So maybe, maybe the next time you can have a map also in there where we have the sidewalks and where the gaps are.
Yeah, so, so, so I think we, we have, uh, we have in our C A D, different, different sidewalk location that. Doable is to develop those in our.
And we have sidewalk projects that are part of like.
We do.
Just so these road projects, and I get the area where we know there's pending development. We would wait on that to be completed before we would do roads, given like truck traffic and.
So, so I think like, like, like a good example of that is Grant Street. Um, we, we know that, you know, thirty five broad is, you know, on the horizon, we're not going to go and. Replace that road only to have it beaten up by.
That's kind of the area I was thinking of, because we're expecting development, we're not going to do that.
That's also within the DDA.
Well, some of these roads are rated up, they are for different reasons, some of them may have. Tracking or alligator tracking, others may just have running. Like when you drive down Baker Road, the second one's two. I'm guessing that probably not running, I don't recall that, or a lot of poples or. We generally don't have a lot of poples. We used to before we started. About fifteen years ago. Done a wonderful job of staying with.
The outline, kind of library is always.
There's a fun aside, when my wife's cousin visited. He commented, the roads in M R B were similar to Rossing after the war. I told him it's an old cobblestone effect. And we've got the same roads as a war zone.
So it's very good.
Okay, from roads.
Uh, there's one list is, uh, water tower. Uh, looking at everything with water tower. Question about what, uh, what does the outside look like once we're done? Um, we're working with, uh, Nelson Tane. Um, to do engineering and design and they have provided a set of. Uh, possible options, um, pages twenty-five into twenty-eight. I don't know if they have any, have any preferences.
I did have some thought. I get to look at them most nearly every day. Out of my kitchen window.
You definitely go first then.
I was there when they were making noise on the inside of it, we say it was very loud, uh. The first one I liked, mine is the gazebo. I liked the greens, the whatever, I liked that font, but I, I don't think I would give the gazebo on it. Uh, the second one just seemed very land and. Didn't like anything to Dexter, except it said his name. Yeah, intended. I did like the other two also, they like that font, they like the, the mix, I just wasn't sure about entirely. That that would require, I think, changing their color of the tower, so you get that, you could see the white of Dexter. I don't know the, I mean, again, what are our goals here? I don't really know how, where you can see this, why do you talk, except for my backyard. Uh, maybe when you come down Shield, can you see it? Yeah, so maybe I've just never noticed. So I don't know if you colored the whole thing just so you can have that white effect of Dexter, if that makes it harder to maintain over time. Because you have a color as opposed to something white and about the gauge, uh. So I guess those are my initial thoughts, I like the first one, I don't know how the lighter color of the Dexter would show up from far away, whereas like right now. It's a city, uh, it's green, even if it just said Dexter, maybe the second one said Dexter, but in the same font. Of the first one in black. The font is more like our brand, but the black makes it easier to see from far away.
You don't want to say gold red.
There's more to Dexter than.
As far as the colors. I mean, we've got, how many of those, how many of those towers have been painted white? Twenty, and what we do is it costs, um, three, five thousand, it comes through and gets a mild to go off the outside, so I think that. If you were referring to this one, once it got to where it needed to be, what's it need to be power washed anyway? But, yeah, I like both of them too.
Seriously, you don't think it being a color would affect the longevity of it?
If we did have a problem, we're gonna have to power wash it anyway, you know, that would bring back the color, whether that's big enough. If you can see it from far away, I'm not really sure on that. I mean, the, the first one, kind of the city logo, right? Right, everything's on, all business card, I mean, it's on everything. But the gazebo are.
It doesn't, you know, six, nine, it doesn't, yeah, it's all you guys want, I do, I'm a person about logo, I think it's a nice logo, I've always liked it. By the gazebo, um, everywhere I've been, they've always said some type of logo, and I just think it's like. The nameplate, you know, saying, hey, this, this is what sets it up for people. But that's me, you know, like I said, I, I don't have any problems, you know, um, no, no, they're kind of correct at home and, uh. You know, it's, it's more of. We're trying to get this done and take a look at this, so you guys can see this make a decision and move forwards, I try to, I want to, would like to do this sprint. It's, it, and it's gonna be close, so. But it's, uh, we gotta get through the state, that's already in the process, um, Nelson just threw these two out and then. I was able to give it to Josh and Justin, that's what they can all use too, so it's kind of all of ours, I think, so it's whatever anybody wants.
I will go on the second two with the colors, um, I did send them like our, our style guide, so those are to like the font that we try to use on everything and like the colors we try to use. Uh, I'm going to start my comments with the question, uh, I remember, I think it took us a year to put up a sign on the D P W building. When's the point of no return for decision on this? When they were in a paint.
Uh, well, we, and they gotta get shit out of there, and I, so, I think I was told that. They could put it down to. Space is, you know, we decided something at the last second, go a different route, okay, they wanted it, they want it quicker than, than I put up. So within probably a month, they're full.
Okay, um, a couple of clauses came to mind is when we're getting paints for our house in Truver Williams, they told us. Different paints have different characteristics, so I want to make sure that. If we do have a darker paint, it does have the same anticipated lifespan, it's darker, it's going to absorb more radiation. More and more than a lighter color paint, I personally prefer the lighter color paint because it's easier to see mildew. It's the old, if it's white, you're gonna know what the problem is and supposed to just, you have to look for it, um. I like using our fonts and. Let's see. Ideally. I would, I, I would throw this over for a contest, that's where I brought this in. And I already has a couple where the kids at the school did different designs that can be a little bit wacky, but you start with that and you do it. I think it's a great way to get interested folks to know where the water actually comes from.
You go to a water tower painting, get some very interesting.
Yes. Uh, one, I suppose one last thing is with the colors, I, I, I grew up in a town that the school colors were blue and yellow. The water towers played in blue and yellow, the street signs were blue and yellow, everything was blue and yellow, so it was a, a branding thing, it, it is still. Vexing for me that we don't lean into the maroon and, and yellow so much because they're kind of rare color combination that's very. It sticks without having to necessarily signal dreads or whatever.
What, what's the estimated possible companion of the tower? I couldn't remember those in the last, the two packets of whatever.
I know we've gone, oh, um, there's somebody else one, I want to say originally they were talking. Ninety to a hundred.
And we have that in our budget, right? Or most of it. Yeah, what's the timetable on, how many, how many months will it take to complete this?
They're all there, just like, so we didn't get inside, obviously, it's a six week, it's supposed to take four. They're telling me usually three to four, so I'm anticipating. Uh, this is just the outside, the only difference is. The standards that we didn't do last time, they're making us do the state implemented it, which is the, around the top, or the tower. And that was it, and some of that work and stuff like that, but, uh, that, that was the only difference. So, and I talked to, we were talking state, they seem to think that they can get, uh, this turnover within two to three weeks. Or, or which, that's what we have. So, we don't want to run into sprinklers along, or, or we'll be putting a restriction, so. But I mean, unless we do anything, unless it goes as planned. Thank you.
So Josh, what are the, that two color, is one a greenish and one a bluish?
The one is. The one is, is a bluish color, it's also having a bluish gray, and both the colors that they used were like a fifty percent of the original color. So like the blue could be significantly darker, so if you want us to, to that's the next color, and the other one, I don't know how to describe that color, it's like.
Okay, so I'm gonna pick, I'm, I'm probably going for the, the newer one. Given that it's. So longevity is the same as you did in the game.
So the last one.
The last one.
One of the things they did ask was, um. If they wanted this, you know, this, this done's only be on both sides or this one. So. I've seen both of them, so. Well, to that point though, I, I would lean toward thinking about who the immediately adjacent people are to. To that discussion, I mean, I, I thought we had a discussion, I, I'll start off by saying, I really don't care what color. But I thought we had a discussion a while ago about painting in a blue that would be more in. You know, with a sky blue type of thing, so it would be less obvious, I, I thought that's what we meant, maybe, I guess it's a bit white.
Yeah, I think that there was a lot of different people, had a lot of different ideas, and I went to the side.
No, that was the only discussion I remember having, with the intent specifically of it being less obvious to the people. Adjacent and many people driving by that at a blend more, but.
I will say we did have somebody over, we were out sitting on the back patio one night and maybe the way the sun was going down. Get that really strange cloud in the sky, and then it took me minutes to realize, oh, it's a water tower, so I think it winds in pretty convincing.
My, my concerns really just to get it in and take care of it on the time and fashion. I, I do think it would be nice if it said Dexter somehow, some way, it does not have to be. Does not have to be aggressive, and that could have lowercase letters, lowercase I don't. Yeah, you know, I, I'm not gonna argue with a gazebo or a water tower, you know, whatever the. I do think it'd be nice to recognize whose business, but, you know, that, that's common, I think.
I, I do like the first one, just because that, that logo is everywhere.
So, so I mean, we, 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 we could do, we could do the first one inch with all black. Flattering to, we, 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 we have that. You know, you know, why?
Or maybe all that green, this video, that, that green. No, it may be black, it seems to, to me that aggressive, screaming, and, and white, it's really just like. There isn't much to be character to it, um, so maybe if that's the green.
What, what other water projects do we have coming up beyond? Did you think of one of the water system projects, do we have coming up beyond the tower or the next this year or the next couple of, or the rivers? Now that we got Second Street watering, that's the next area, what's the next worst?
Well, so, so, so the, 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 the next, the next work area is, uh, down pushing.
Yeah, so it's that, we have pushing and, uh. Have begun, hopefully we believe that done, and then there's one bigger, small section, a lot of small section, but. Not too much, such, such, such a bigger through. Including watering, so water main and baker is not letting, like, uh, starting like Emress and, or in pushing. Um, we gotta do the filter, it has to be painted, all that. I don't know, the last filter, last two were done, those were the four years that, that were done, this has been twenty-one plus years now. I mean. Built a building, we, we were trying to do it this year, it's just, it was too short of time, it couldn't be done in time. Um, so over the next year, uh, we did iron fine, just got that done, uh, that's all taken care of, actually, we're back walking through it already. Those are, I'd say, I'd say those were pretty much the majors. Um, I mean, there's other things that we got to, like as a, the generator and, um, the generator itself and the fuel thing certainly. Separate a little bit, rent a few, and, and we have that, I think it's gonna be talked about, I'm not sure what, what things are. Um, the other thing that we talked about, Justin, was watering, this water, the, uh, treating our generator for anyone that's can run more things than what we have now.
So it's yesterday, we had, um. Zach and I attended the, uh. Meeting, what do you call it, pre-application meeting. What's her name, Kelly Anderson, I think it's her name, she brought in a concept, I brought my copies to share, pass around this over. They're proposing essentially a residential, a residential, uh, set of buildings. For the eighty-one, eighty. Which is across, you know, the creek from the park. And they've got two. Two potentially. Three, five story buildings. With nine units in each building. They're both on plan. Nine inch, nine units in each building, nine residential units per building. Of varying sizes, some would be two. Uh, two bedroom and some are three, I think, or whatever, the range of sizes is like one hundred to two thousand square feet. But the, the first floor would be plating, that would plating the car under the building. And not to get into too much detail, I can just give you a reference. When they would want to, they were talking about going through a P U D process and. I thought. Fits the most, if they would pay for the water mains to get to that side of the creek. Rel- relative to our water system concept, and I, I guess the question that I've been asked is. You know, that development may go forward or may not go forward. Um, how important is it, you know, from a planning perspective? For us to plan for water main to that side of the creek? I mean, at minimum, I think we want to make sure we're thinking about it in concert with what we're on about, project with road commissions, as I believe. Got on their horizon for twenty twenty-six. Is that, I mean, if it, if it, if it isn't something that the developer does. Are we still thinking that we want to do it? As a, as a cost for, you know, prior to that project or as part of that project?
So the only reason the water is required there is to even develop there. Is that right?
Yeah, opposed to letting them operate out of well.
Right, so.
The longer, the longer term thought though is that this. The longer the longer term thought though is that this. It's I I think it's logical, Jamie, that over time. The properties there along there to Chelsea. Long term or adjacent to the sewer line that goes up to the high school. They want to become part of the city. And for them to become part of the city, big part of it is water and sewer. The sewer is there. But the water is not, so. The challenge was setting the putting the water across there instead of. You gotta figure out how to loop it back in eventually to get this together. They have to go underneath the bygone, which was if 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 they went. Underneath the river, underneath the bygone, tide end and Westbridge somewhere over there, um, if you know what I mean. That would buy us time to figure out. Then we have a loop. Which would be substantial. For Westbridge and and Cedars and.
Well, and that's that, you know, that total amount of water made it maybe something that I don't know if they didn't put that on one of them or not.
I can buy I'm saying, you know, and asking how important is that if they will? Is that something that, you know, if if we were to design and move that we would rather have them pay a portion of? I'm throwing it out there as well.
You would want them to pay for something that is directly then and then in that phone. I mean, I think there has to be some other reason the city is trying to get involved. And if it's to your point. That is improving our efficiency somewhere else or our ability to get something in at a later date. And because of this kind of road project, then I think we do as much as we can facilitate. That leave whatever can be left. But I wouldn't go out of my way to do it just to help. One parcel. Without them.
Yeah, I I agree that the properties on Dexter Chelsea up to Haley. Are are gonna be city eventually. If you look at the ones that are for sale now, they're priced as being in city, not it's being out. Um, so we we ought to think about getting the water there. The challenge then is getting the loop down Dexter Chelsea. I I've seen community where they did have a loop and they had sent someone out there to leave the fire hydrant open. For hours. Every week for the system to not get clogged up. Uh, as far as the public benefit. They can't build that building without municipal water. So it's it's their cost to do the business. Where the benefit would be is if we we've done our design basis and we figure out what capacity we need in that pipe to support the rest of it. And they paid for upsizing beyond what their project would. Otherwise, just running the water main over so that they can follow the site for a building that has to be sprinkled. With municipal water, that's that's their own, that's on them.
Yeah, I I that's where I'm going is I mean. I think it moves us to think about this and plan a little bit because if we see it as part of the vision. It's a, you know. But it is it is a cost, is a cost of price. You know, it's a future cost. And and in terms of going down Dexter Chelsea, I think Tim, it was new that he thought that. I mentioned yesterday. Depending on how far it goes ultimately, you probably have to move under the creek again opposite grand or something. You know, that's the end of the grand line, right? It's gonna take some thought. You got two two loops that run into Westridge right now. So that's looped, right? Heads over to see yourself. There definitely needs to be some thought for it again. I just, I guess I just bring it up as a, again. I look at these work sessions as long-term planning and if we're having a list of things somewhere that. Either prior to the roundabout or by the roundabout, we ought to be, I think, correct to do that on a roll of that on the ground. Is there? I mean, run the sewer down. That that ends at uh, Daxton, Delcy and Parker and this gravity from basically, let's say Dexter, Delcy and Parker. Down. Only thing that comes in there is a foresting from the high school. It's a pressure system.
Yeah, it's all it's directly it's. Strictly the school. I mean, is that a possibility? I mean, we have a well down there. There's a possibility that run from. The water from the high school down Parker and down the trajectory for Chelsea. So absolutely, we're gonna do that. Just gonna be a lot more. Right, well, I mean, to. I mean, there's a sewer line in there, right? So. So I would think of Dexter Chelsea, the risk they run is that county says no, you can't have a. Uh, separate field anymore. So you better tie it to this sewer line. Coming into the city, having good water, all those bits of things. But I mean, all the discussions we had with. Whatever that some of the reason is out there, basically, basically.
You'd have to shoot elevations to see if we can even get gravity. I mean, there's a lot of work that they have to go into water and sewer or fresh. Well, again, I I just in terms of the the planning, you know, quick now. Putting that, I think, on the radar. I think that. You know, we we went through a lot of effort. To. The milk export company used to be half in Sile and half in Webster. There was a lot of coordination. It's now a city parcel. It's a parcel that's outside the DDA, which means the city. Probably would benefit from the tax revenue a hundred percent. Okay, and when, you know, you're talking about what Justin started the conversation on. With, you know, our revenues and. Cost of things. That's a property that would benefit the city. General fund. As well as water, so over time, for general fund directly. So I don't know, I think it's important that we try to support it.
Let's say a public super big benefit is if there is a spot for well on there. I don't know if there's space or animation, but that would be huge.
I think they have the, I think they have a. The size for a small project there, but I don't think it's. I don't know if they tested it for like minimal spot.
Yeah, well, that that I would throw that in conversation that. They're gonna need water and if we can get extra capacity, I hear that from water folks all the time, more wells, more wells, more wells.
Oh, that's on that. We're also looking at that with um.
They moved the walls too. We gotta, we gotta some sort of free.
Yeah, and you split the system.
Which that's when you start to get a little bigger.
Yeah, in space, yeah, there's not enough space for most proposed, right, or well, then. So I, what I passed out, I didn't explain very well, but the drawings, the four large drawings. I believe as well as provided by. The Kelly Anderson and her team. She has an artifact. In California. And Jeff, it was very well spoken yesterday at the meeting. He was really impressive to listen to. I thought dynamic and. Seemed to have done his homework about the community. Wasn't just a stranger one far. And then the the contractor that they have on their team is Bloom. So like, remember that Bloom is the contractor that lived out on pain. Here in town years ago, like ten years ago, I don't know how that was. And then the second thing that I tracked out, Kyle Marsh was from our planning commission. Um, was invited to that pre-application meeting also, and he had provided some problems. You heard his comments and questions that he mailed at the show table for me. So I thought there were comments, stuff about orientation, going his own. You know, obstruction, cars go, other people cross the car path. I didn't need to go down the development path. With all this new development and development that hasn't happened yet, um, I think Tim or I heard that we're gonna be doing a study. On where worrying is and with water and wastewater and. I mean, I think we did that, was it two thousand fifteen, the last time we looked at?
Yeah, and we're looking just because of former farms, but now that this this would actually dislike the wall out. So it's it's on radar.
Yeah, that 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 is gonna be a project that we're gonna do to direct later. It's uh. A more comprehensive. Do we have a capacity study? Um, because, you know, between this this property, where it requires um thirty forty five abroad. You know, there's, there's. Grand Street, there 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 are adults sitting out there that we we do want to make sure they'll be in a town that they can provide service to.
Are we done on a lot of systems stuff for now? Are there, I guess I should ask, we don't have a specific sewer topic, but are there? There were projects, there's sewers and projects that are on our radar, or are we just gonna really have the goal to continue to pay down our debt and?
Yeah, so so the sewer system is is one area of of. Challenge right now, um, because we do have a lot of debt on our on our service system. Um, that we're that we're carrying. It's it's hard to. Want to make the recommendation to take out any more debt to do any, to be larger projects. Until some of that started coming off, which isn't until twenty thirty. Um, so I think we go for now like just to try and get as many kind of smaller projects done year over year that we can. Um, until until we start to see some of those very large bonds start to come off.
Yeah, it's pretty much beginning right now. Okay, we can do.
So what would you, in terms of capacity, what would you say the plant is on an average day running now? As far as gallons per million gallons per day or however. The 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 capacity is what, point five something, point five eight?
Point five, sorry? That's what we can run through that without any problem.
Got a lot to do with loading too. Oh, I did, yeah, exactly. Yeah, yeah. As opposed to just water.
Yeah, because the, I mean, the the big attached is a phosphorus.
And how are we doing on that?
Since we did the broad data, I had the headworks and stuff in trouble. But I mean, it's.
Those are still working well?
Yeah, I mean, uh. We've had problems with the phosphorus and even this last year, they're violation, but they're. According to what's going on, they're in the process of getting some kind of treatment system. Yeah, that's so that's cool.
One of the, with the sewer budget, when we did the headworks in the filter project, I thought that I remembered, not that there's anything to do about it now, but we didn't raise rates for sewer. As high as we put up the first year. Does anybody else remember that?
We we we've been raising.
Well, there was seven percent. It was supposed to be seven percent, but I don't think the first year.
I I I I I believe you did, and when you raised some thousand percent that first year.
I believe we did. And I guess I'd I'd really like to know if there's a way to go back on that because, well, the reason I'm bringing it up is. When somebody tells you what you need to do to maintain a certain project. And this is, and if this has happened, like I think it did, this is the second time since I've been in thirty seven years, it creates problems for that department. When you're not raising rates the way they should be when you hopefully do a project. And if I am correct. Which I didn't call port neon, which I probably should, but I thought we didn't do that. For uh, as high as we're supposed to in the sewer. So if you compound that over five years or six years or seven years, that's taken away from the budget of the sewer.
Do you remember what year that went there?
No, I was gonna call for it. Cause I'm pretty sure. But anyway, go off. Just to step, to simply do a um. A simple chart show, just do a list of what we increased everything by over the last ten years. Kind of goes to start over. Cause it's substantial. I mean, the rates, the rate rates.
It's been, it's been seven percent.
Okay, maybe I'm wrong. That's been hefty for a while. It might have been one year where it was less, but I don't know. I know, I know it's never happened. I don't think we've done zero. I guess any of these tasks is one is when you don't do. Right, even though it hurt. As they are, it's a user-based system, right? We have those. Facilities and. The users have to pay for the cost of facilities. They have to maintain them. People are, of course, they don't work. The costs are more expensive if we're out of compliance.
Well, the the interesting thing though is that uh. I I I have to check those, but I feel like like usage has been going down.
First, it seemed like there was some restrictions on it. I know when I started, it's like one hand said water hole. And you take that away down to. Around seven hundred thousand, eight hundred thousand, I don't know, there's a somewhere three hundred thousand. So, but I get all the questions about usage, but yeah, I mean, I know some are still do irrigation, so it's not going down somewhere. It's a sewer. Always try again.
And and we're not, we're not in a situation where we're, we don't have any cash reserves. We just don't meet the recommended. Correct level of reserves in that account. And all the number is, but I would say six hundred thousand or something, but we we don't, we have a certain amount of money.
Fifty to seventy five percent of operating.
Is what's recommended, right? And we don't have that current amount of reserve for less than that, whatever percentage is. Okay. Okay. So just to clarify, are you said it's gone down significantly?
The water usage has gone down, which, you know, sometimes, I mean, that's obviously some of that's actually the sewer debt.
Well, yeah, so remember, we 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 build sewer based upon water. Right, so first year. First year, that's right, first year. So if the. You know, we've been on even water cycle usage for. Ever. Okay, well, yeah, so ten years or more. And I think we've seen, even though the number of users has picked up a little bit, because we have had homes come online or units kind of in either. The usage for persons down. Obviously, if you just build down, your rates are gonna go up. Cause you got, you know, you got this cost.
Part of the weight study we did twenty years ago, anticipated increase. Yeah, it was a great, great study. But part of it was increased rate, because otherwise we were gonna have to push rates by like my forty percent. But because we had growth, it's offset some of the revenue value. I mean. From a revenue standpoint, if the usage is going down or has gone down, I mean. If we get. I mean, I know on the sewer side. It's different considering it, but on the water side, I mean. From a business standpoint or revenue standpoint, I mean, do we get rid of it days because we want more revenue into the system? You just can't, we just can't do it because of the fact of. The state came down on us and we can only use so much waters per day. You know what I'm saying? So so many million gallons a day because. It was, you're using so much, I'm correct, for us, you know, I got here, so I'm trying to remember. And the state basically said you're using too much water for what uh, producing of the wells can do.
When they look at your public, your high service body, your wells, and they calculate that all together and say, this is how much. Water you can use. And we were well over that one one two million gallons with the sprinklers gone. The residential sprinklers gone. Without those, we can maintain just fine. The aquifers and, you know, you stay into the mandates from the.
So so so, you know, it goes back to the the sixth well. I mean, if we had another well, we could pull from. Then, you know, there's the potential, I mean, we did, we get rid of that anyways. We were not pulling it off from one aquifer. But.
So, and Joe, if you remember back, so our original oil field was down there in Community Park. Between here and farms. And we asked back in. I don't know, two thousand eight, nine, ten, somewhere there, we did the fifth well at the high school. And when they did the original drilling for that, then one year, when when they did the original testing for that. It was envisioned that we would have two wells there. Instead of just one. To draw from, to add to the four that we have down near here on farms. When the fifth well got set up. And started pumping from it. The recharging rate there is slower than the original well, our other well field. Yeah, so the thought is because it doesn't recharge as fast. Adding a second well to that same aquifer doesn't.
Doesn't do anything.
Doesn't do us any good, it's a thought, so, so we, we sort of, I think abandoned the idea that there would be two there, we're happy with the one and. Under the odd even, that one continues to recharge just fine.
I thought when we looked at it, that when they did the testing. It wasn't like one, and I don't know, pick a number, hundred thousand for whatever timeframe, the other one wasn't. Might have been a hundred thousand also. The two of them were two hundred thousand, but the two of them were more than one hundred thousand.
Right.
But it could still recharge, so I mean, maybe it was like one thirty, one forty, one fifty, or something like that, you, you still had some incremental gain.
Hmm. But, yeah, they just, they just noticed when it was stressed, it doesn't recharge as much.
Oh, yeah.
We found out, we found out the actual use, that it's a little slightly different than the.
Yeah, and you also run the risk, what they call cavitation, which is the room without, or it airs in the system, everything, which can ruin the pumps in the whole system and everything, and you get it, and that's my understanding, that's what they were.
We should, certainly, change the whole operation, now, we, we know what our aqua levels are at, especially there, but we also maintain a log and was a high drive, so we know where the water levels are. Um, weekly. And those are reported, our council reports include those, and the, the, the water, you get the level of reading of the. And every water usage for, I don't know too many other communities that are so aware of their water than the city of Dexter.
We do a really good job, and, and the whole thing with irrigation thing, that there's a thing called permanent capacity, so basically.
That was just, that was just a random question.
Yeah. I've been to two other communities, and I've never seen water, I mean, take Brighton, and we do a really good job, I mean. We're the only community I know that literally gets their pumps cleaned, every, I get one done every single year. And clean, be clean, you know, ask Washington, and we pull on a service pump, and we do that just as a benefit, but I've never seen that before. I've been to the, the other two communities where they, you know, they clean the well maybe once every ten years. You know, so. Is it costly in money, yeah, but it's in the long run, just, well, Justin and I just got done discussing this about a long time ago, when we got done with the wells, well, I got pulled and cleaned this year, and, uh. Usually, at the end, when they go to repair bills, they can be upwards of ten thousand dollars, and the bill this year is forty seven hundred dollars. So, I think it's, it's doing good, what we're doing, and we do take pride in it.
Well, through the years, we tried both, and that's, we tried the one where you just, you know, let it happen, and whatever happens, happens, and I, I think that the ways we're doing it now, keeping up on that, I think there's costs. Yeah, you know, and then if you do have a water problem, that's not in the middle of the summer, when you can't afford to have a water problem. Yeah, so we usually have a, seeing the. That pulling of the, of each well, or whatever, once, once you do that, it's like, circle up the twenty thousand or twenty five thousand dollars, depending.
Yeah, it's, it's, Corey started at twenty, it was twenty thirty. We're still at twenty five this year, it's, it's gonna, well, next year, because of the fact that everything's gone up again.
But relative to like what we're spending on roads, that's a maintenance cost, we do it every year, right, on the water system. Okay.
Yeah, it brings a, a question for capital cost for water and sewer, my understanding is historically, we primarily funded those with new tap fees. Um, and we don't have a whole bunch of those, we've got some infill, but not as regular as it was the past twenty decades. I, can someone confirm if our next rate study, which is coming up next year, is gonna look at how we do funding capital works without taps?
Yeah, yeah, I was looking at that in a tapies. The structure of tapies. Um, I haven't answered to the question, how are raising the rates? And seventeen, eighteen, it was three percent. And eighteen, nineteen, it was seven, nineteen, twenty was seven, twenty, twenty one was seven, twenty one, twenty two was ten, twenty three, twenty three was seven.
Okay.
Assuming that council didn't change any of the recommendations, I don't remember you doing that.
So, what was the first year that you said it was three?
Three was seventeen, eighteen, but that was before hot padworks.
Okay.
Yeah, though, 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 the, the before that.
Yeah, and then eighteen, nineteen, it was seven, every year except for twenty. Twenty, twenty, twenty one was ten. Twenty twenty? Not twenty. You're never making that one.
No, you're okay.
Well, there's a public period, twenty, 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 twenty one was.
Thanks for looking that up. I know we learned early on, and back, oh, you mentioned the rate study, and the country, yeah. Came in, in the, the important message was that you gotta keep up with the cost of living at, at a minimum. If you're not doing a little bit more, and I think, I'm pretty sure we've done that every year. Um.
Yeah, I'll tell you, no, no, I, I, when I've been in the building stuff, and talking to residents, and a lot of residents do always. Talk about water, assuming all its rates are, but what I always tell them is, it's all everybody, because I said. Water can be expensive, so, but obviously, the L P's got to be one of them, but I just think water, one. Your, your bottle of water, so, even if you buy a cheap one, a dollar. That's one bottle of water, and for five dollars, you can get a thousand gallons of water. So, obviously, that's gonna be, and, and once you bring that to their attention, a lot of people are like, I never really thought of it that way, and you, you don't, because you're just here every day, doing anything, you're buying a bottle of water, it's a dollar, a dollar fifty, you know, they probably stop. So, it's, it's, um. It costs money, but, you know, as long as we keep, maintain where we're going, doing what we have to do, we should go pay for the renovations, it's a huge part of it. So.
While we're sort of talking about, um, development and the concept of studying capacities and all kinds of things. Getting. Grabbing up this one, or. I, I, this is not in the package, the package is from. Um, actually, it's from Tom Culver, but the affidavit, yeah. Uh. I mentioned in my report. At our last meeting that. Um. I had the opportunity to have a meeting with Mr. Lutton and Silo Tompkins, who was there last Friday. Not yesterday, but, but we did it on Friday. And Silo and Mr. Lutton and their preservation consultant, Barry Lonnick. Uh, had a meeting prior to that meeting that I attended. Silo's. Silo's take on this property right now is heavily focused on preservation. Preservation of the dark green. Areas that represent the woodlands, and they even want to have farmland. And farm type preservation on the. I'm gonna call it the western portion of the stuff, East of Baker Road. Um. But. Silo, who is the chief supervisor. He believes that. His, his board will be supportive of a plan that would allow. The annexation of about forty to forty five acres. Into the city and from the northeast corner of the property. Should we want to. Add that to our city. Um. There's not been a concept drawn, uh, related to, you know, a number of homes, but Tom Culver throughout. Depending on how big your lots were up there, they could get anywhere from, you know, forty to sixty to maybe eighty lots, somewhere in that range. If you remember the, the original discussion that Mr. Lutton presented to us. He was up in the six hundred range or thereabouts with different, more, more types of housing. Um, over larger land. Um. But I, I, you know, I don't want to just be talking to Silo or talking to Mr. Lutton without council's. Input on this and thought on this, um. You know, I, I know when I moved in. Back in two thousand one, two or three. There was always a vision that. Dexter Crossing would be a little bigger than it was. Initially, it wasn't gonna be this big. But the area that's in brown here. Was an area that was envisioned to be connected to the backside of Dexter Crossing. I don't know what phase they called that, that it was going through the plans, and eventually didn't get approved, but obviously, Carrington and Wellington are. Are shown there as connecting points there. Um, as this whole thing has been kicked around different times over the twenty years that I've been here. One of the concerns that's always been. Brought up by us as a community is the ability to cut through, it was always a concern of how, how many vehicles from Baker were gonna cut through Dexter Crossing, and it wasn't set up for that. The concept here where the Silo. And the developer, they want to agree, want to, the preservation of this. Could provide a lot of advantages to, to the city and the residents, um. And first of all, I think that the, I just need the number sixty. Somewhere in the vicinity of sixty residential units, I think is something that would not greatly impact our. Treatment testing. Okay, now, I know, I know it's sixty, maybe more than we thought somewhere else, but sixty, I think, is a manageable number. Um. The other thing that is really, I think, could be kind of cool here is that. South of this property, Silo Tompkins was working on a trail system plan up from Marshall Road. That they would, if they could get this property preserved, they would put through this land. With the idea that it could connect to the sidewalk that's at the end of Carrington and Wellington, could be a huge public advantage for residents in that area to have. A network of trails that are accessible, similar to how other parts of our community are closer to. Trails, and kind of a trail town. Uh, those, I think, they are, um. So there's a lot, yeah, this, this is a concept, and I know there's not a lot of huge detail, you can read all the, the stuff on here. Um. But, and we don't, again, we're not making decisions today on Saturday, but at some point in time, I do know. Is there interest in talking about? The four twenty five for that portion? Um, according to Mr. Hathaway, his board is interested more in preserving more of the land and developing. Uh, the developer acknowledges that he wants to have some type of return on the property. And he would get some, if, if Silo used some of their. Preservation dollars, they could. Pay the developer a certain portion based upon, um. appraisal. Values of three acre. So he could get some return through that, because of some of that, that's going through the development. The beauty combination of that.
Zach. Yeah, so, no, you said you didn't want an answer, but I'll give you an answer, I would not support annexation of this right now, and I'll give you the reasons why. Um. That sort of density will tend to lose money on the cost of infrastructure support based against the revenues for taxes, so that's gonna be. A lot of road surface, a lot of sidewalks, a lot of pipes to support it, so we may not affect capacity or, or treatment plant. But that's a lot more pipe, and we're generally not gonna recuperate it at those densities, um. I, I.
Right, Zach, what do you base that on? That's a broad statement, it's gonna be usually, it's not.
Um, twenty years of being a planning, the, the rule of thumb is you need, you need four units per acre for it to make sense financially, now, that, that's really, really depending on how roads are financed, schools are financed, and public services are financed, so, the. One and a half units per acre is well below that, I haven't done the full math on it, but. We, we see how much the roads are costing right now, and when I was in Dexter Township, we did the math on something with similar road density. Or density of units that had, like, two miles of road, it came up to about five hundred dollars per year, per unit for roads. Just to maintain the roads there. And I don't see us. Getting that for these plus the other stuff. Uh, the other thing is. I would not want to place the burden of all these vehicles having to go through that neighborhood, I think having a connection out to Baker is important for emergency and just general flow. Um. It's contrary to our master plan that says this is next to us, we wanna have more density there, it's contrary to Silo's master plan that says we wanna have more density there, and Silo. Silo's the reason why Dexter Crossing is empty, right, or it's, it's never been full, why the commercial part, because they're giving permits for everything up and down the strip. And, and it affects our commercial base that they're doing that, they have also done, approved a massive project at the end of Baker. Hundreds of units, um, this isn't a place for preservation, if they want to. Do it, then they can, they can deal with having people having subject fields on there. So I would not support this, it's, it's not beneficial to the city. From my perspective.
That's awesome, Dan, when, so, I'm trying to read between the lines, Zach, you would support if it was larger?
With. Yeah, with, with lots of preservation, so. Also, from the planning perspective, is I look at the housing stock here, we have lots of single family houses, we don't have a lot of duplexes or townhouses or those type of things. And it doesn't make sense to have that type of density that has to drive through an established neighborhood, because you get a lot more trips, and that's, the roads aren't designed for a lot of trips like that, so. I would, I would prefer more, I prefer, there are lots of good spots out there preserved, so I don't see houses spread across the whole thing, but. I can.
Okay, well, I don't know, lacking a lot of input, I guess, I keep talking, so, but I, 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 I don't know that, um. You know, I'm, I'm not for developing this whole thing as densely as Mr. Lutton admitted, either, I think that's way too much, I think that the, the ability to get. I think it has way too much. Wave like ramifications on our system, okay, to, to me, that's the definition of just fraud, we're just spreading out unnecessarily. Um, I think that. I don't know the exact number of homes that are in Dexter Crossing.
Two sixty three.
What is it, three sixty three?
Two sixty.
Two sixty three, okay, so you, when you're talking about approximately a twenty percent to twenty five percent increase potentially in the total. Um. I think, I, I don't think, again, I've never pushed this property. Okay, I, I firmly believe the redevelopment within our town outweighs this, okay, but. If. The, this size of, this size of a, of a four twenty five situation. I think is doable, I think it's something we can handle. Now, it, it's likely that, that's right, it's likely that there would be single family homes. It doesn't mean they have to be. Could be that we, we asked for. Something that is more like, uh, Victoria Crossing. That's right, and, it's very kind of, Victoria, I missed two, two things there, you know, it could be that it's, it's. Multi-family or, or attached, or something slightly different than single family, but lot, 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 lot. Those are, those are, and those decisions and discussions can be had, I guess, the question that I'm asking is. You know, are we interested in talking about whether or not, you know, if we're gonna do a capacity study of some type? Can we handle this? With our current treatment order, when you do the study for. Yeah, well, if you're, if you're telling me you're at three hundred thousand gallons. I don't think sixty homes could. Personally impact that. Um, okay, outside of, relative to all the other stuff that's going on.
You gotta look at the whole picture.
I'm not, if you know what I mean, I'm with it, I'm with it. But it's not six hundred. And we have, we have, how many users do we have right now? Eighteen hundred user counts?
Probably.
Four? Eighteen hundred, nineteen hundred, I mean, five hundred, I mean, not too far off.
Eighteen hundred, yeah, you got seven hundred, probably, in second years, but, yeah, somewhere in there.
Okay, well, my point is, there's eighteen, eighteen hundred users, or eighteen hundred users, you know, sixty is. What?
Yeah, but it's three percent.
Three percent, and if, if the margins, marginal increase is my point.
Right.
You all have to understand, six, six hundred would be a thirty three percent increase.
Right, it's, but it's when you think with, with, for, 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 and then you have, you know, Broad Street one, you know, the branch street, and Southern Bottom, two on Grand Street, you know, the one over, ninety five, so.
Yeah, one.
And they did do the studies, so we were able to go back and look, and, you know, update, and take a look and see if this.
Yeah, a lot of that was included in the two thousand eight study, so. I hear you. So now.
I would, I would just say that, yes, I would like to see the study, but, um, I also agree that there is a much bigger difference between sixty and six hundred. I would, I was never in favor of that, that's such a big, um. Addition, because it wasn't just the water on sewer, there's a lot more to it, um, this is at least something to me that. I, I would like to, to see what, what else can, can be, you know, like, I mean, like, a little bit more conversation about it, that's something that is. To be more exciting than what was the six hundred and the. That's something that is to be more exciting than what was the six hundred and the whole area being built. So this is, uh. This is much more interesting.
Well, the, the other side of this is that, you know, there's, there's nothing that says that SIO couldn't do the same thing and still connect to the cars, Dexter Crossing.
Yes.
Well, except it's our roads, we get to do permits to them. I don't, it's all the road or.
You can't, you can't just hook a driveway up to a Washoe County road commission road.
I know, but it wouldn't be a driveway to pull the road, right?
There aren't any more public roads in Washoe County. It'd be a private road looking to a public road. We can control that as the road agency.
I would be really interested if there would be another way to get in and out of here. If we were going to consider something like that, which on this planet doesn't really look. Look like that, that would be possible. Um, two, I remember, this has been drawn up a couple of times, not that anybody's ever been involved in it. But there was also discussion with prior council members about making, this would be the only opportunity if we ever wanted to make the industrial park bigger. Yeah, we just don't connect to the industrial park. Right, we don't touch, we don't touch it. Right, with this point. Yes, so, so, let me tell you where I'm starting. Okay, this property is not in the city of Dexter. It's inside of township. So, so my, my, whenever I've been asked to talk about it with SIO. Or the property owner, I have said, what does SIO want to do with their property? Their property. Okay, now, I will agree with Zach, their master plan has density here. Okay, I don't know why they chose density in the area that they don't have water and sewer. It makes no sense to me at all. Okay, it made no sense when they put it out there, but, because frankly, it seemed like this Billy. Justice position on some thoughts to me, but. They have indicated that everything in green. They do not want to develop. So. You know, based upon the. Twenty years of talking about this. If they don't want to develop it as, as anything, they're not going to put it, it's not going to be industrial. I don't, I'm not looking for a hostile takeover to say I want the property for industrial. So it's, if they, if they want it preserved, it isn't going to be industrial anymore, that's going to be residential. Is my, is my thing. So, I mean, we could dispel all of that. I know that's been a long-term idea. But it was more, it was more viable when we had the road between Dex Tech and Dexter Fastener. It was a decent property that we gave away, that we gave away. It was more viable then when we actually had a way to connect it to the industrial park. We don't have any of that, and as far as I know, we're not pursuing any of that.
Well, I can come up as part of the conversation.
But a friendly, so you use the term, you use the term of Mr. Love when it first came to us. A four twenty-five is a friendly annexation. Well, because essentially what, what it does, it sets up the ability for two communities to exchange property and our services long-term. You know, tax recovery, help set up. I'm, I'm okay having a friendly conversation, but I'm not looking to try and take property. Okay, no, that's my own, I feel, I'm not disagreeing with that. The four twenty-five seems like a, a good deal for SIO. Um, when they don't have to maintain the roads or any infrastructure, any of that, so.
I, I'd say we, we do have some bargaining because they can't support that density without our infrastructure. And if he can't put enough units to recuperate his money, he's not going to preserve all this green. So if SIO wants to preserve all that green, they need to do ways that makes the city happy as well. Not just what do you want to do with property, but what do we want? So we can bring up the conversation of, hey, industrial park is the engine of our tax base.
Yeah, I just brought that up as part of the council history. Blow this up. My main thing was trying to figure out if it mattered, if this was something we were going to consider instead of. The whole matter is what most of people have the objective to live in, but.
Yeah, and I think that's, that's, full pattern is, is. It's something that comes to my mind because. I, I agree with Dan that having another. Way to get there, it's, it's good. The problem with this right now is that the entire construction. Traffic will go through Wellington, Carrington. Um, the, in, in the past, when we were talking about the entire site. We even talked a little bit about potentially closing the Wellington, Carrington. For the duration of the construction, so the trucks don't go through that, and there was a path from Baker. Uh, but with this, the, the entire construction will go through, uh, through Dexter Crossing. And I know that there will be a lot of, um, unhappy people there. So I don't disagree with that. I don't, I wouldn't want construction running right by my house either. But this eliminates the cut through, so it's a short-term problem. For something that's a long, like, kind of not create a long-term problem.
Well, you know, but by the way, nobody's. We're, 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 we're into, to detail, which are important, but nobody has said that they couldn't bring materials in. Doing that different way as part of the planning. In an effort to eliminate construction traffic. Nobody's even asked the question, oh, I would, you know, this, the thought process isn't that far planned out.
Yeah.
You know, what, what, what I've been asked is, A, do, do I think that this is something that the city would want to have a conversation with SIO about? And then, and two, you know, do we have to think about, do we have capacity to serve it if we're going to take time to have a conversation about it? I think that given that I just heard that we're doing this capacity study. It makes sense to include it at that level, but. Yes. But I, I don't know how the PDR stuff all works or how exactly how much, you know, per acre and all that stuff. They threw around, they threw out a number somewhere between sixteen and eighteen thousand acre is what they could pay for land. This, this whole thing, I think, is, I'm sorry, what was that? Somewhere between sixteen and eighteen thousand acres is what. Basically, probably, probably a break of what they could take your land. The SIO is actually the bible and for sure, in a way. You know, if, if, if I, if I just add this up, which got me thirty and eighty, there's a hundred and eighty plus twenty-one, two hundred acre. You know, it's three million dollars and. There's three, four million, there's, there's three million dollars in land, I mean, just that they can pay him back for it through the PPR for the reservation fund. So, you know, the developer doesn't have to make a lot of money off of this if, if his whole, I think he made four million dollars for the whole property, if I looked at. Dexter or something, I remember I got that number, but. He doesn't have to make a whole lot, I guess, to get back the money or to, to have a return on investment, so I'm getting that, so.
Right, well, okay, so that's a good, so going off the drawing, this forty-six acres, then up to seventy-five lots, I know there's some other numbers. Just going off of that, just as a starting number or whatever. If you go with the idea that, outside of township, you have to have one acre per lot, right? That's their, I think that's this area, the wave zone was, or I've heard that it's one acre per lot. Essentially, I know there's not that, I'm just saying round numbers. Say it's forty-six acres, it's forty-six thousand, instead it's going to be seventy-five lots. How much is a lot in Dexter? Marie?
One twenty-five-ish?
Right, one twenty-five. So you're talking about thirty units, talking about three point seven five million in value, in value. At probably at a minimum of going from what's here to what's potentially there. That, that, that's what we are worth, the end, right? So. I, I worry about having a connection that go down to Baker. I, I like the idea of a loop better, that would go back to the Dexter Crossing. Understanding there would be short-term issues. The people that I've talked to in the neighborhood are very scared when people say. Six hundred units, four hundred units, whatever is there, because they're like, oh my God, it's going to be a free bay coming down here for people going down there to go through there. Now, obviously, there's the other arguments that, you know, maybe it's going to go the other way. Maybe people are going to primarily be coming in Baker and not Dexter in our road. And really, it's going to be the opposite. It's going to be Dexter Crossing traffic that's going to be going through there and not someone the other. I, I don't have any idea. I don't know how those are going to, well, I'm sure there can be a study that would be done to kind of parse that out and predict what they think it might be. But. On a four twenty-five, my initial knee-jerk reaction is not in favor of four twenty-five. Um, we hassled through the four twenty-five with, uh, Westridge, dealing with what's your township? I think we're still paying for it. We are for a couple more years. I, I think that's ludicrous. To have people that are in the city and paying a higher tax route to another municipality that, as Dan said. Provides zero service, zero benefit to those people. That's just, that's just short-term selling out those people. Is all it is, for whatever time it is that that four twenty-five is in effect. If there's some benefit and it would work out. Then I can see considering, but initially, I'd actually be not in favor of four twenty-five. They want to come into the city, and they would come in as an annexation. You know, our policy has been, if you're not in the city, then, you know, we don't provide water and sewer. So as far as I'm concerned, we should bring in. Four twenty-five is the other thing that doesn't get talked about a lot, is four twenty-five, you can't hop over it, right? So with townships around cities, they use them as a wall, the wall off for redevelopment. Now, obviously, this one doesn't do that that much, but the idea would be is that, that's sort of like they're, they're. Being on, on the bottom side of that part of Dexter there, that's, that's part of the benefit to them as well. So everybody's got benefits. SIO's got benefits, they got taxes, they get, you know, legislatively, they get, uh, property that gets in the way there. You know, the developer did its benefits, he's economically coming out of advantage. The question is, what's the benefit for Dexter? And until somebody says to me, this is how Dexter is going to benefit. I mean, I, I don't say no. I, I, I. The only benefit that I see is that it's limited development that's going on to that part of the city. And it finalized that development potentially if all this other related was, was preserved. That, that's the only real benefit that I'm, I'm seeing. I, I don't know, I'm willing to concede that the tax base doesn't cover the services, the things I've seen. Includes schools, and schools are a huge, huge tax, part of that tax base, and without the cost of the schools added in. The, the taxes are fine. And the best example of that is Dexter. Because we had it Western, we had Dexter Crossing, we had it here in Barnes, and we went from a little bit more than twenty years ago where we were. You know, initial budget, that was a million dollars in the red that had to be worked down in hours and hours just to try to get to a balanced budget to. You know, succeeding in twenty years of having quite a bit of excess. And so there, there is value in that tax base that we have, I think. But, um, I, I guess that's, I, I would prefer a straight annexation if it was to go forward. I would prefer to not have a connection to Baker going forward, and, um, I'd like to know what it is that. The city and the people in the city would stand again.
One of, one of the things as the retirees who went down to the public utilities. Um, what was added that made things a little easier for the residents to raise their taxes on water and sewer. Is when you do developments like here on Farms, Westridge or Dexter Crossings, there's tapping fees that have to pay. And I don't know how many millions of dollars that we've paid. You know, taking that money and put it into our infrastructure and put it into our sewer, the water, storm, I mean. It's, it's saving tax out, or, or the taxpayers a lot of increases, and I think that we're kind of looking at that right now. I'm not saying yes or no to this development or any other development, but there's going to come a time when the tax fees are going to be there to pay for a lot of. Uh, maintenance. Uh, I mean, we're talking millions of dollars, I don't even know how to put a number of that. So, um, we're going to have to raise taxes to do that without those penalties. Well, everybody, everybody has a different way of, um, prioritizing what they consider to be benefits or. Frozen caps, I guess, right? Everyone puts a different value on that. Joey brought that up later to the fire station, not ago. Um, so I, I appreciate the input on it, um. My goal today was just to present what I learned at the meeting and what we'll share with you and get some feedback, though. You may see this on a, a future agenda as a, a topic, um, for some additional thought, and I don't like any decisions today. But I wanted to bring everybody up to speed on what was. On the concept that was proposed, and, um, I, I saw some initial value in it because I do think. I do think the preservation of that land is something that many people that live here in town value. They, they value it as open space. They like when they drive. North, south, east or west out of town that we're not just. The one in New Garden City, one community, the other we don't know about, and I, I, um, I was intrigued by the concept. That if that woodland preservation. Is held and trail systems could be developed, to have that really close to the people that are there on that part of our town. They're the furthest ones away from our trail system. And I, I, I think the fact that the communities around us are sort of wanting to connect to the city. Um, and find ways to give their residents a chance to be on those kind of things. I, I, I see that as a long-term benefit. Obviously, they've got to build those trails and not day-to-day, but to have access to those woods. Yeah, you know, SIO would be lucky to do their dollar for our, our citizen benefits there. So there's, there's some other things. Again, it depends on how you rate the, the stuff, you know, if, 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 um, I don't know what the value of a home is. You talked about the land at a hundred twenty-five, but if, if each of those holdings is. You pick the number, four hundred thousand, three hundred thousand? Yeah, you know, pick a number and multiply it by seventy, and it's a, it's a, it's a big, it's a big number relative to. You know, new, new construction gets counted directly. Benefits us in our formula for taxable value, so. You know, again, we, 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 I mean, we're talking, we just, we just approved grand use for seventy-eight units. Seventy-eight units in our DDA, and. You know, we talked earlier about the potential for nine plus nine plus nine maybe years to eighteen or something down on the Milk Creek Sports Site. I, I think there are benefits to this. I, I have to think a little bit about what Zach said and the cost of. Thanks for attending. You know, because the, the other thing that you, you potentially hit the benefit on is, you've got existing utilities that are already serving. They're right there. The water system, the, the crossing is right there. It's, it's not a lot of add. In, infrastructure to add, that's what's in, but, um. I appreciate the opportunity to represent it. I, I, you know, I'm, I'm not trying to negotiate between this body. And the developer. I have no tie to that developer or any of that. Like I said, this is not even from the. Twenty some years I've been involved, this has not been on my radar, something that. I'm anxious to do. This is the first time, though, that it's everything is anything unlimited in a limited dose. And I think limited doses could be an opportunity as well. The other thing, if you mentioned the porch, I thought it was like a, a way of walling off. Well, so is preserve property. You know, I mean, if, if we help SIO preserve that property. We get that benefit forever also, because they, they can't undo that.
Right.
Okay, and the, and the developer isn't going to agree to do that if he doesn't get something somewhere else. So there's, there's, there's three of us here at the table, so it's, you're, three out of you. I don't know if there's a happy, you know, solution for all of it, but on the surface, it seems like something worth sharing.
Yeah. I really appreciate that because I've always said that that property, as you said, is right by Dexter. So whatever happens to that property, whether it's good or bad, it, it impacts us. And all, all the way, we are, we actually get a lot more impact out of it than SIO in general does, so.
Right.
Um, for me always being part of that conversation, at least at the table and having some, somewhat of a voice there is, is very important. So thanks for bringing me to this.
Yeah, I just want to say one thing, so I, I. Connected to that too, and you're talking about what's the benefit to Dexter. I'm not going to sit here and pretend I'm ignoring what Zach said or what Dan's saying and all the numbers. Like, if that works, to me, this is a huge benefit. It's what you said. This is what. This is what helps us keep Dexter Dexter and not just a suburb of Ann Arbor, I mean, it just, it stops. It, it, it just, to me, it's a long term, that's a huge benefit for me personally.
Um, we are afternoon, and I, it's ten minutes after twelve. Is there, if you want to go too much longer on us? If they, if they need to go, I'll get a dollar or two or other place. If, if they didn't stop in the winter, if they didn't, if they wanted to say that, they didn't get a chance to say. No. How about non-arranged participation, any thoughts for the audience?
Uh, yeah, I, actually, I just, uh, I didn't interrupt myself, I'm Ron Noor, and I live at seven, six, five, four, fourth street, right now, been here. Number of years, um, and I serve all the parks of recognition, and I also serve as a board member of the senior center, so. When I, I look at your goal setting and things, I, I scan that list, I'm looking for. Uh, you know, what the, what the plans are as it relates to parks, long term development. Uh, I feel like our parks are somewhat disjointed, and, and, and when we plan for the parks. Uh, it, it feels like they're in each in competition with one another because there's somehow not a cohesive integration of how, how parks really serve. The community in total, and I, I sort of wanted to think what the goal setting is to how we integrate parks. Really into our community in a broader way, as we define how the city is going to grow, so I'm interested in this conversation about the slum authority. And what ideas might be around that, how that might tie into. Border to border trail, how it might serve the community in some way, and when you plan developments. Housing, I'm also working my year's up for affordable housing. And that benefits the community tremendously, and there, I don't. Yet see a sort of, uh, cohesive approach to, to that problem, I know you had a housing. Uh, commission, so I'm, I'm looking for what, what your ideas on there, and I'm representing the senior center, I'm really interested in, you know, how the. City is approaching the, the aging community population. In the community, and, you know, I, I'm interested in some of the ideas that I've heard about, uh, recreational authority, you know, the senior center, we all know. Uh, and their issue fail, tying to the bond issue, the school bond issue. Um, but we were critical mass, and we just, and we really had to have a solution, I want to see what the community of Dexter and the Strang community. Is planning to do to. Uh, help. Uh, the seniors in this, uh, this population, so those are the kind of topics I, I was kind of interested in hearing about, I saw. Someone was sort of listed in the role playing. I guess that's. I'm interested in the discussion inside who are working at this.
So I can, I can, um. I can provide a little bit of, um. Comment on the senior center or what Mr. Miller is. Um. Prior to. Well, in the last quarter of twenty twenty-two. I had met, I think on three separate occasions with the Webster Township Supervisor, John Kingsley. Sile, the Sile Township Supervisor, Will Hathaway, he might have been in over a couple of meetings. And then Diane Rakovich, the supervisor for Dexter Township. Um. About the idea of creating a rec authority or authority specifically for the Dexter seniors, so that they can have a, a chance of their own unique funding mechanism. Um. The, the two townships have their board meetings on the same night. Okay, and, and, and the Tuesdays are there, um, I was forgetting what week it's, but. Dexter Township and Webster Township both met in December before Christmas holiday. Um, Jim Carson, he's sort of helping lead the board there at the senior center, he attended Dexter Township. Uh. Meeting, and Supervisor Rakovich. Apparently didn't say very much at the meeting, she let her rest of the board ask questions of Jim. And one of the trustees there was very outspoken about not wanting to add another millage. To their tax base. Um. Jim and I touched base after that meeting, and I'm recording, I don't remember who told me. So, I need to bring those, I need to bring Dexter Township and Webster Township back together. Uh, John Kingsley. Told me that he doesn't think he has the support from his board to pass. A rec authority, though. Or not, I'm sorry, to just, to set up a rec authority, okay, and, and their concern is based upon the fact that Webster Township. Would be about forty-seven percent of the total tax base of that future district. And they want more of a user based. Cost structure. So. Um. Ron, I'm running a long time, it's my intention to have a topic at either a council meeting or, and we can do it at the next goal setting meeting, which will likely be in March. Probably after we get in here, not the March fourth date that I've thrown out there since. They're moving that week, I don't want to put the goal setting session. One day after they spend a week trying to get in here, so probably push for the eleventh, if that works for everybody, but. We will be having that topic at the discussion on our future agendas, I think it's, it's an important topic. Webster Township would like to have more like an interlocal agreement, rather than setting up authority. Um, some of what gets in the way is Webster Township folks are more concerned about, well, what if a Sile Township president wanted to join the Stevie side? What would they pay relative to if they were within this. Organized authority? So, I, I can't answer some of these questions because I'm not. I don't know, I don't have the full vision of the Dexter. Senior Center Board, but Jim and I, um, will be meeting soon, and I want to get an update from him and. Kind of figure out where to go there with the conversation, and then. You know, it won't be invasion of all of you, but. On the one to the that half versus the other, or, or maybe we just set up, we can set up the authority ourselves. And that would be how. They get funded from Dexter residents as opposed to, you know, right now, we pay as part of our general fund. I don't know whether, I don't know, you know, there's all sorts of ideas, I'm not saying I have it all figured out. But I have, I have been, I have, I've given it a lot of thought on, I mean, I, I, I was prior to, prior to Christmas. Or the December month. John and Diane were nodding. In unison with me, that they thought it was a good idea to set up this rec authority. And, but their boards. I'm not sure they have supported the boards right now. Neither took a formal vote on it.
I mean, I, I can say from the board. Senior board, I mean, it obviously is an urgency issue, so, and, and we know that everybody is sort of arguing, well, what's my proportion of cost, and how many people from Sile come into. The Dexter seniors served by the Dexter, and how many from Webster, and the fact that it's, it's. It's located, and, and the intent is to keep it located in the city of Dexter, I mean, that is, that is the board stated board goal, we think that. Has real value, and it means like bringing people into the city, uh, who need services. And who have used other services in Dexter, so I, I. I appreciate all of the different conversations I've heard about, uh, that, but the board feels a great deal of urgency of, of some. Kind of commitment and decision to a process, uh, and how, you know. And it works, it's an important community. To, to serve.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and I'm not saying it's not doable, you know, you know, I think, I think we pay, Justin helped me remember, we pay.
Sixteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand, right, fifteen thousand right now for the senior center. Which comes out of our general fund, you know, if, if, if the senior center has an operating budget of. Say three hundred thousand dollars.
No.
Is it higher? Well, well, it's, okay, I picked a number that I thought, Jim, so call it quarter million dollars or whatever. You know, if, if, if we're a third of that. Or forty percent of that, it's a hundred thousand dollars. If we did it through it all. Our discretion would have to be, do we, do we think we have a hundred thousand dollars that can support that? If it was based on a user, you know, number as the township suggested, meaning percentage of users. So, you know, you'd be, you'd be going from a sixteen thousand dollar commitment. To a hundred thousand dollar commitment, I made in those numbers, I don't have any idea of the breakdown of, of stuff, but. If it was not done, my goal in, in trying to set up the authority was to give the senior center the opportunity to. And levy the, the dollars on their own merit, take it out of the community's hands, and make it more of a community centered. Funding ability. That was the initial idea, because I, because I thought the original school millage did pass. Not because of the senior part, but because of the school part of the four color, and that's the feedback I heard through the conversation center. It isn't something we're ignoring, I'll tell you that, I appreciate you breaking it up.
Well, I think you could have a cost structure where you have, depending on who's funding the majority of the class, you could have like a resident, non-resident. Type of cost, you know, so you have some more like, well, Sile was not part of it, or, you know.
I agree with you, but I just don't know, but, yeah, so I want to absolutely answer the question, it's the problem.
Right, it's right.
All right, thank you for making some comments, I've got, Justin, you got the name of the address down for the meetings, okay. I want to thank everybody for taking time out of the Saturday morning, I think they're really important, um. It's actually time to talk about, about ourselves, but thanks for your input. Um, we really do want to go kind of global, be better on that.
We will make sure we absolutely go through all of the next.
I agree, that'll be, no, we'll do that, because there's a thing on, uh, it's going to be crossway on, like the road to the park. I agree, I don't even ever get on.
We love it from the wedding. But the guy I know is second in, for one evening, I was the one that had to, you heard the utility recall, they got put on that, somebody wanted to talk about.